Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the May 13th, 2025 meeting of the Glendale City Council. May we have roll call?
Councilmember Asadurian.
Here.
Brotman.
Here.
Carpetian.
Here.
Kasakian.
Here.
And Mayor Najarian.
Here. Will you please read the closed session items?
One, a conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, one potential case regarding initiation of litigation. B, conference with real property negotiators regarding proposed acquisition of 1,000 South Central Avenue. C, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation involving two cases brought by Central BWB LLC. And D, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to subdivision D2 and E5 of Government Code Section 54956.9.
Thank you. Mr. Garcia, do you anticipate reporting out on any item?
Mr. Mayor, we do not anticipate reporting out. Just for the record, on item 1D, that pertains to a threat of litigation and notice and opportunity to cure filed with the city by the law firm of Jeffre, Mangels, Butler, and Mitchell on May 2nd, 2025.
Okay. Thank you. We will recess to closed session. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the continuation of the May 13th, 2025 meeting of the Glendale City Council. We are returning from closed session with nothing to report. May we have roll call?
Yes. Councilmembers Asadurian.
Here.
Brotman.
Here.
Carpetian.
Here.
Kasakian.
Here.
Mayor Najarian.
Here. And will you all please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance? Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
And today, we are going to have a special guest giving us the invocation. I invite Mark Witas, Director of Mission and Spiritual Care at Adventist Health, to address us.
Thank you. And greetings from Adventist Health and our President Elisa Tsai. Let's just pause a moment to reflect on God's blessings. Lord in heaven, you have told us in your word that a city on a hill is a blessing to a community. And we know that these people here in Glendale are your people, they're your children, and you love them and you want the best for them. So you have these people, and you've given them wisdom to make decisions tonight that are going to affect their people and your people. So I ask them, I ask you, to give them wisdom, to embrace them in your grace and your love, and to give them all the right things to say and do that'll make tonight a blessing. Amen.
Thank you. May be seated. Madam Clerk, may we have your report?
Yes. The agenda for the May 13th, 2025 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on May 9th, 2025 on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. What's next on the agenda?
Next are presentations and appointments. Item A, Agenda Preview for the Meetings of Tuesday, May 20th, 2025, by Assistant City Manager John Tuktalian.
Thank you, Mayor Najarian, members of City Council. Next week, we have four sets of meetings. The first one, starting at 9:00 a.m., that'll be a special meeting of the City Council. This will represent session number two of our budget study sessions, specifically will be discussing our departmental budgets, our fiscal year 2526 citywide budget, not to be confused with the general fund budget, which is what we talked about last week, as well as a public hearing on city vacancies and recruitments and retention efforts. There will also be a second special meeting in the afternoon, starting at 3:00. That'll be for a public hearing for Stage 1 preliminary design review related to a 20-unit, six-story mixed-use building located at 340 North Central Avenue. Following that, we'll have a joint City Council and Housing Authority meeting with one item on the agenda, and that'll be from Community Development with a report seeking approval of appropriate affordable housing funds in order to support the Metroloma apartment. That's specifically related to an affordable housing project that's currently in default and under the threat of first mortgage foreclosure. And finally, for the evening City Council meeting, there's a number of consent items focusing on the action items here. Glendale Water and Power will have three separate reports. The first one will be an introduction of ordinance authorizing issuance of electric revenue bonds. The next item from that department will be the annual update to their wildlife mitigation plan. And the final report from GWP will be seeking authorization to increase the ARB, Balance of Site Engineering Procurement and Construction Contract, by $40 million to a total not to exceed contingency of $76,270,000 to address new pending tariffs. Community Development will provide a project update for Vision Zero Action Plan. Fire Department will hopefully finally present their report that's been carried over for a couple of weeks related to establishing a standardization for their high capacity of this equipment. And the last item that evening will be from Public Works, seeking to increase a contingency amount to finish up Fremont Park renovation project.
Thank you, Mr. Tuktalian. And last week, we briefly mentioned, for those citizens who are interested in getting into the detailed description of the agenda items and any attachments, what's the best way that they can access those?
All of the agenda items are located on the city's website. They can also be accessed through the city clerk's website. If you go, you can have a historical archive of all the agendas. Within those archives, you can click on open any report, as well as be able to click and watch the video for those particular items.
And the documents on the website are the exact same documents that we get. There's nothing more that we get that we don't show the public that's available?
Yes.
Okay. Next item, please.
Next is Item B, update on the Grayson Repowering Project.
Mr. Galanian.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor Najarian, members of City Council. As you know, we have started, actually, the demolition is complete, started the Grayson Repowering Project, and we haven't had an opportunity to provide an update on this very important project within our city. So we thought it'll be a good opportunity for Mr. Mellon, our Acting General Manager of Water and Power, to bring you up to date as to what's going on, what the progress has been, what the next steps are, and briefly mention the impacts of the tariff currently that will have on the purchase of the equipment for this site. But he will go into more detail with the staff report next week.
Absolutely.
Mr. Mellon.
Good evening, Mayor Najarian, members of the Council, Scott Mellon, Acting General Manager, Glendale Water and Power, here to give you a brief on the Grayson project. So we'll start off with the current status. From contractual completion perspective, we're at about 38% complete with the ARB Engineering Procurement and Construction Contract. And we're about 60% complete with the Wardzilla Engineering and Procurement Contract. Under the construction status, we broke it up into four different areas. Wardzilla Power Island, which includes the reciprocating internal combustion engine generators, that's about 45% complete. The Battery Energy Storage System Power Island, that's about 29% complete. And the Balance of Site is 19%, with AMC Building, Administrative Maintenance and Controls Building at 10%. We're at about 171,000 man-hours equivalent right now on just the construction side of things, well over 250,000 man-hours if you include soil improvements and demolition. So the Wardzilla Power Island, to start off with, we've completed the foundations, underground piping, underground conduit, and structural steel. And we're in progress on the above-ground piping, above-ground cable trays, the minor equipment placement, and the engine assembly. So the big silver building right there is actually the engine house, where the three engines are going to be housed and generators. Just to the left of that, it goes out to the radiators, and you can see the, kind of the walls that are built around and up, those are where transformers are going to be going. So there's the generator step-up transformers on the northern side, and the southern side is the battery step-up transformers. For the Battery Energy Storage System Power Island, we've completed the BSU transformer foundations, the battery step-up transformer transformers foundations, the BES PDC foundations, and the Area A, B, and C conduits. So Area A, B, C, and D are the locations where the batteries are going to be placed. And so that's kind of why we're calling them out that way. A, B, and C is on the southern side, D is more towards the middle location. You'll see a better layout when we do the drone footage, which will follow with this presentation. In progress, we're still working on the battery and the PCS foundations and the Area D foundations. Balance of Site and the AMC Building, the BOSS, the Balance of Site PDC foundations are complete. The new Demon Water Tank Foundation is set, and the Fire Water Loop and drainage systems are installed. We still are working on the AMC Building foundations proper. You can see some of the rebar in that checkered kind of formation on the bottom right-hand corner. That's where the foundations for the main building are starting and being built out and going to be built up. And then we have the underground conduits to follow. From an engineering and equipment status standpoint, almost all engineering is complete on the Wardzilla installs. We are still working on equipment deliveries, most of which has been delivered to site except for the transformers, switchgear, and the continuous emissions monitoring systems. The engine blocks are currently in Long Beach, waiting a pathway to get here. And in fact, I just got news before I came up to you guys that we finally had a permitted path to get the engines to the site. So that's good news. There was a lot of work that we were going through trying to get through LA, but we found another path. So that's good news for now. On the ARB side, the civil, structural, and mechanical engineering is complete. The electrical routing is complete. We're still working on the electrical and controls engineering design. The Balance Site and the Battery Energy Storage System equipment is either in fabrication or being tested. The battery order decision is kind of up in the air right now, due to tariffs. We'll go into a little bit more detail on that later. Essentially, we're looking for the best process, the best mechanism to get the batteries here, and either avoid or consider the impacts of the tariffs in the process. So tariffs. With respect to Wardzilla, almost all of the equipment for Wardzilla was delivered under the presidential, the first presidential pause. So we were able to get most of that equipment either in-house or across the border. There was a little bit of impact, but we're managing that. That kind of falls within the contingency. We're looking at about 2.8 million that would be rolled up and covered under that contingency. Just as a point of reference, the GSU transformers are the spare parts that fell under the EU tariffs, and the auxiliary transformers and switchgear fell under the Mexican tariff. I believe EU is 10% and the Mexican tariffs are 25%. For ARB, a little bit bigger picture, more parts moving for them. Most of the equipment for the Balance of Site, the Wardzilla Power Island, and the BES were largely paid for. We have the transformers coming through Mexico, power distribution center, switchgear, also coming through Mexico. Structural steel and piping would be Mexico and China. That, we're looking at approximately $7 million increase. Big-ticket item, unfortunately, is going to be the batteries. The Battery Energy Storage System is coming through China. That includes the power conversion system and the batteries themselves. These are estimates of about $75 million. That's what we're looking at right now. These are estimates based on before the current pause, which was implemented after midnight on Sunday. We're still in consideration of what that implication means. We are still concerned that, given the 90 days, they will have reached no terms, or we will be right back to 145%. So that's a point of conversation that we'll have to have. We'll be covering that in more detail next week. That $75 million plus the $7 million does exceed our current contingencies. So if you can start up drone footage, I'll kind of point out a few things as it flies So this is a general view from the north looking south at the site. That's the engine hall right there where the cursor is. You have the, like I pointed out, the concrete walls are where we will put the large-scale transformers. Off in the distance, you'll see one of the stacks, that's a half-stack that's up, and the other two are laying down on their side. Those would be, yeah, exhaust management part of the engines. And in the distance, you can see, and we'll get closer as you move, this is about 43 seconds, so it might be a little long for conversational, but if you look in the distance, you see squares and rectangles in the concrete. The squares are the foundations for the batteries themselves. The rectangles are the PCS, basically four batteries per PCS. And then cabling from the PCS goes to the PDC, lots of good acronyms. And then PDCs are fed into the local grid. All right. So upper left-hand corners with the same, where the building is going to be going, you see the footprint in the grid where the rebar is placed. This was taken about a week ago. There has been significantly more progress made in just a week, including a tent that's kind of where that dirt mound is. That'll be where the engines will start and be assembled. And I'm available for any questions if you have.
Any questions? Mr. Brotman.
Thank you for that. Given that there's now this 90-day pause, is there any prospect for getting those batteries across the border within the next 90 days, or is that impossible?
No. It's very impossible.
They haven't been manufactured yet, or?
No. So what we have paid for a lot of the rare earth materials and made sure that they were available to the battery manufacturer. Our original delivery date was December, which is both good and bad, right? When it comes to batteries, you need to have the ability to, once they're built and brought on-site, to give them electricity and keep them going. If they're delivered and you aren't charging them up, that does irreparable damage, well, it affects the ability to charge the full deep cycles. So in a normal plan to have large batteries like this delivered to a site, you would plan them after you've got energy to the site and as close to the beginning of use of those batteries as possible, so you can get the full life cycles out of them. And right now, we didn't have anything planned to build those faster. So we're in a queue, just like everyone else is in a queue, on getting batteries shipped and/or built. So we're where we were to begin with. We are looking at different options and negotiations. We're working through our contractor, their sub, and their sub, all the way down to CATL, and figuring out what options we have. But I can cover those more next week.
Okay. And our timing, I think from the last conversation you and I had, was it January, February, that we wanted to have those batteries arrive on-site, or is it later than that?
Well, December is when they're planned to start being delivered. We are looking at if we have the option to slip out. And that's part of the negotiation that we're going through right now. That is definitely one of the, it's one of the approaches we're taking, to see how much slip we can incur without having a significantly negative impact to the overall project.
Okay. And our goal is still that we are operational with our new Grayson system before the summer of '26.
That is absolutely our goal.
Okay. Are we starting to make contingencies for, if that can't happen?
Yes. That's all part of the plan. So we have to look at what options we have.
Okay.
It's a considerable amount of negotiation that's taking place with GWP and the contractors. So the reason, the reason Mr. Mellon is not...
I don't mean to be aloof.
Right.
Yeah. There's only certain things I can talk about.
Right.
But, and if I might just finish, I know we're talking today about Grayson, but we've got this other project at Shoal Canyon, and I know you gave a presentation to the GWP Commission recently, and you were pretty adamant that we're going to have that in place and operating before our next, not this hot weather period, but for 2026. And that's going to get us around 11 megawatts?
It's 11 output, yes.
And that's very important. That's on track. I guess there were a few delays, but it's still...
Right. There's slippage, we're still negotiating how to recover from that slippage. Key things like the availability of hardware and supply chain issues and materials, same kind of story we've been telling along with other projects. But we're looking at how to get that back on track. Goal is to try and have it functional and up and going before the end of this calendar year, but that's still in negotiation.
And the Jenbacher engines are already in the United States?
Yeah. They're already up on the hill in place.
Oh, they're here? Okay. Okay. All right. Thanks.
Just not everything else.
Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Carpetian?
So the $75 million in tariffs, is it based on, what, 30% of?
No, the 75 is based on closer to 134%. That was before the 145 jump up.
134%. Right. So the cost of the batteries are what?
Batteries, just the batteries and battery system, I think, the last time we discussed it was around 180 million.
And that gray building or silver building that you mentioned that is going to house the engines?
Yep.
Is it capable to host or house more and more engines in the future?
No. Unfortunately, no, that building is right-sized for the three engines that are there. And you saw how, I guess one of the things I should point it out is how congested that site is. Our contractors have done a remarkable job of avoiding injury, maintaining high safety levels. When you consider how much equipment is being moved and how many people are around at all times, it's very tight. You have the transformers are going to be placed in key locations close to that facility, which kind of boxes it in. There's only a couple of options in the future if we were to look at additional, either storage or generation. We would have to look at the flatland between A and D battery sets before it gets to the control room, or possibly D if we can't get that built.
Because, you know, at the briefing, I voiced my concerns about the amount of power that we're going to need in the future and the amount that we can generate with Grayson today, or when it's completed in the future, like next year or so, especially with that 14% cap of generation with ARB. So if you have 55 megawatt, 14% of it is like less than 8 megawatt. So I don't think that will help us in the future or serve the community well in the future, when we are going towards the electrification and more electric cars, more electrifying the buildings. I think we need to have a plan. So we better start looking into our plans and see what can be done to be able to generate locally if we needed to. Again, I mentioned this a couple of weeks ago about Spain and Portugal and south of France, and they all went dark. So if you don't have that capability locally, something happens with our transmission lines, then you're going to have big blackouts. So I don't know what the magic answer is. If it's up to me, I would replace the batteries with engines tomorrow, because batteries do not generate power. They are just storage, which is fine if you have an option. But if you can't generate power to charge the batteries, then that's going to be a problem. And sun doesn't shine every day. So I wanted to have this report. I have more questions. I know that it's not agenda, it's not part of our agenda to talk about the specifics of the project, but I think for the entire community to know, it's our job, our duty to look into other options as well. If we can help this project to generate more power, this is a power plant, has to be able to generate power. So that's my two cents on this. I have other reports that I'm going to mention during the council comments, but with the cost of batteries and cost of the engines, they're almost the same. Three engines are 170, 80 million, and the batteries are about 170, 80 million. And the batteries do not generate power, so. The ball is in your court, I guess. I mean, we have to look at, look into different options, because power is life, if you will. Water is life, but so is power.
I agree.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
No questions.
Yes. Councilmembers.
Are there any updates on the municipal bonds and the exception, or the exemption that they were trying to pull?
Yes. Actually, just read it today. There was an update that so far, it doesn't look like they're going after the municipal bonds. They do look secure. There's no coverage in the current legislation that's going to do anything to prevent us from having them. And in fact, they look like they're getting support from the GOP also, so it's even more positive.
Okay. Just way of background, when we're in DC, one of the items that was on the chopping block was the exemption for municipal bonds. That was going to be part of the president's thing. So that was part of the lobbying that...
It's been a good day of information.
Just a follow-up quick question. So if, let's say that happens, if they go after municipal bonds, what happens to our project?
Well, we've already issued two tranches. I don't know that we'd be able to issue a third if they decided to have an impact on the exemptions, but that would be a conversation we'd have to come back to council and kind of ferret out.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? I just have a brief one. Maybe it's not too early to start thinking about naming certain buildings or components of that. If you can get back to us and let us know.
Sure.
What there is. And... What there is, and we do have rather strict restrictions on naming. Generally, it's post-mortem, so there's a, one, at least one individual that I think might be worthy of a, a naming. Just communicate that to the city manager and at the appropriate time.
Sure.
We can ask for it to be agendas, agendized.
Appreciate that. I, I do want to extend an invitation to all the council members to take a tour of the site. It's one thing to look at it from a few thousand feet in the air, it's far different to be there, put on ground. Obviously, it would take, you know, anywhere from three to five tours, but we're more willing to set it up if you guys would like to take a walk.
Okay, we'll contact you and get the hard hats ready.
We'll call us, we'll call you.
No, I mean, the appropriate, you don't want to lose any of us in a hole, or a...
No, no, we'd like to keep the safety standards high.
If something happened to one of us. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mellon, I appreciate the update. Next up, please.
Next is item C, proclamation designating May 2025 as Jewish American Heritage Month.
Thank you, I do have a proclamation for Jewish American Heritage Month, and I believe we have someone from the Jewish Federation. Rebecca Russell, Program and Community Outreach Director. Welcome to Glendale City Hall.
Thank you for having me. Very, very honored to be here.
Would you like to make a few remarks, or would you like me to get into the proclamation?
Uh, I'm not sure what the proclamation is, can I make remarks afterwards?
Of course you can.
Thank you.
Let me make sure I have the... And this is the proclamation. Whereas Glendale, California takes pride in its rich history and embraces the diverse cultures that contribute to the unique character of our community, acknowledging the pioneers and immigrants who have played pivotal roles in shaping our city's development, growth, and strength. And whereas since 2006, the month of May has been designated as Jewish American Heritage Month, recognizing the significant contributions of Jewish Americans to the cultural, social, and economic fabric of our nation. And whereas the values inherent in Jewish faith, including the inherent dignity of every individual, the sanctity of life, the observance of the Sabbath, and the paramount importance of education, have helped shape the character and ethos of America. And whereas Jewish Americans play integral roles in the success and vitality of our nation and the Glendale community, contributing to various sectors, including leadership, entrepreneurship, and public service, and therefore I, R. Najarian, do hereby proclaim May 2025 as Jewish American Heritage Month.
Thank you very much. Oh, thank you, I like coffee. On behalf of the Jewish Federation of the Greater San Gabriel and Pomona Valleys, we are honored to accept this, we are excited that you are presenting it. We work together with our community, with many other communities together, all over the San Gabriel and Pomona Valleys. We are thankful for the cooperation and partnership of this council, and we're excited to continue working with other groups of diverse individuals to continue fighting the fight against hate. We are stronger when we are together. So thank you.
Thank you. And I'll be... I'll come to you.
Very exciting. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Does council have any comments before we move to the next item? Okay, next item, please.
Next is item D, proclamation designating May 2025 as Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month.
Accepting from the Japanese consulate, we have Consul General Naoshigi Aoshima and Consul Kumiko Nada from the Korean Glendale Sister City Association, President Chang Lee from the Korean American Federation of North Los Angeles, President Steve Park, members Jeff Lee, James Kim, Jugi Park, and Sonya Han, and from the Filipino-American Business Association of Glendale, Edith Fuentes, along with other members accompanying her. And would you all like to come forward, please? And it is wonderful to see members of the Asian American Pacific Islander community together as one. I would like to say that the city of Glendale proudly proclaims May 2025 as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, recognizing the rich history, culture, and contributions of AAPI communities, both nationally and locally. This observance highlights the important role AAPI individuals have played in shaping Glendale through their leadership, diversity, and cultural exchange. And speaking of cultural exchange, I believe we have a sister city in each one of the represented communities before us. May I introduce first the Consul General to say any words, if you'd like to?
Thank you. Thank you very much, Honorable Mayor and distinguished council members, city managers, and all the respected staff of the City of, uh, City Hall, and all the eldest friends and people of the City of Glendale. It is an honor to celebrate the Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Months at Glendale City Hall with our Asian friends. My name is Naoshige Aoshima, and I'm honored to serve as the Deputy Consul General of Japan here in Southern California. On behalf of the Japanese community, I would like to express our sincere gratitude for this initiative. We would like to pay tribute to the City of Glendale for many efforts it has taken to make our diverse community a better place to live. Japan has had a strong partnership with City of Glendale for many decades, including the establishment of the sister city relationship with Higashi Osaka in 1960. Although the Japanese community in Glendale is not a big one, it benefits from the city's efforts to respect diversity. These efforts include last year's initiative of establishing Sada Umenemori Square, named after a Glendale-born Japanese-American, who was awarded Medal of, Medal of Honor during the World War II. We are also grateful for your support for Japanese cultural events at Shosei and in Brown Park, which was gifted from Higashi Osaka in 1974. It is encouraging to see that the City of Glendale has taken steps with new initiative to strengthen its partnership with sister cities. We are committed to work with the people of Glendale and our Asian partners to revitalize Glendale sister city relationships, and ensure that all who love Glendale are bound together by even stronger friendships. We look forward to working with people of Glendale for greater partnerships. And I'm from Japanese consulate, and this is not happened that, that Mr. Chang Lee and we stood together, but thank you very much for your friendship, and thank you very much for the, all the initiatives, thank you very much.
Actually, that means, thank you, thank you for your remarks. That means quite a lot to us in the city of Glendale, to have a camaraderie between Japan and representatives of the Korean community. Let's move to the Korean community with Mr. Chang Lee.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, council members, and City of Glendale. And those are gracious words from Deputy Consul General Aoshima. He said it all, so I'm not going to say more, other than the fact that the City of Glendale recognizes and celebrates the month of May to, for AAPI, Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month. So again, with deepest my appreciation, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lee.
And we have Steve, Mr. Steve Park.
Yes, I'm going to invite from the Korean American Federation, President Park.
Thank you very much for inviting us, we can proclamation together, and then we are, this way, we can always, City of Glendale City and Korean American Federation, we all, we can be together one part, and then we help each other, and then become, yeah, like family. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And perhaps the most dynamic organization in Glendale for Asian American Pacific Islanders is the Filipino-American Business Association, Edith Fuentes.
Last but not least. Honorable Mayor, council members, staff, good evening. I'm Edith Fuentes, board member of the Filipino-American Business Association of Glendale, and with me are other board members, Lucille and Jo Silomonson. Thank you very much, and we are honored with this proclamation. Rest assured, we will continue helping and collaborating with the city's different departments, like what we did last night. We had a very successful workshop on building and fire safety at home and in businesses. And we will continue our leadership within the community and collaborating with other organizations and, like, groups promoting our history and heritage arts and culture. Thank you again, good evening.
Thank you very much. I'm going to ask my colleagues to join me down for some photos and the presentation of the proclamations, because I'm very happy to see you all together before us in Glendale.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations, congratulations. I'll get behind Edith. Okay, do we all fit? Great, one more, one more for the city. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, let's go to the next item, please.
Next are consent items, the following are routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such request before a motion is proposed. Mayor Najarian, we do have one public comment on this item, on item one.
Which item?
Item one.
What is item one?
Yes. 4A, that's right.
Is that the one you wish to address?
I was going to pull 4A, yeah.
Okay, so will someone move the balance?
I'll move the balance of the calendar.
A second.
Roll call, please.
Council members, Alsatirian?
Yes.
Brockman?
Yes.
Carpetian?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes, please read 4A into the agenda.
4A, Glendale Water and Power Regarding Award of a Street Lighting, Light Painting Contract to Street Light Restoration Specialist, Inc., for Glendale Water and Power's Painting Street Light Standards on Rossmoyn Neighborhood and Honolulu Road Area Project. specification number 3995. One motion authorizing the city manager or his designate to enter into and execute a one-year contract with Street Light Restoration Specialist, Inc., for GWP's painting street light standards on Rossmoyn Neighborhood and Honolulu Road Area Project, for the not-to-exceed amount of $269,280, plus a 10% contingency in the amount of $26,928.
Let's hear from the speaker first, and then I'll go to Mr. Brockman and anyone else that would like to address it.
All right, the speaker is Beth Brooks. You have three minutes.
Hello, everybody. I love how you have the, the 130, I mean, actually, the devil is in the details when you look at the supplemental material for the agenda. So for this item, it's between $270,000 to $300,000 to paint 226 light poles. That's $1,200 for one pole, 38 poles a month, it's a little more than one pole a day. You had a quote for $61,000, as opposed to this quote for $300,000, which is five times as much, to paint a pole, and you rejected that bidder because they had less than five years' experience painting an interior or exterior of a building, and they didn't paint poles. So the idea that, I actually think, you know, spending is a whole issue about the city council, because they think you're very reckless when it comes to spending, but that you rejected a bidder who was one-fifth the price to literally paint a pole, not to restore it, just to put a coat of paint on it, to me is, is, is beyond reckless. I don't think you should, I don't understand what happened here, I don't know how you chose this person. The highest bid was almost $600,000. From $60,000 to $600,000 to paint a pole. It shouldn't cost $1,200 to paint a pole, a little more than one a day. They get one, almost one a day painted. That's cra- that's crazy. The budget session last week was just, you know, tighten your belts, we don't have the money, and now there are tariffs. I mean, this is, this is insanity. If it was a question of, well, special experience to restore it, it's an antique, this and that, it's painting. If you can paint an interior or exterior of a building, you can paint a pole. I can paint a pole, okay? I think this, this is, this is obscene. It's an obscene expenditure. And I think people should really take a look at the supplemental stuff that you're putting with the agenda, because I think it's fantastic, I appreciate it. I don't even know if you've always done that, or I didn't pay attention, but I think it's a great idea, because you can actually see in the supplemental material what's happening, and you're going to be shocked. This was shocking to me. I knew it was a big number, and it just didn't make sense, and then I looked, and I realized $1,200 a pole? You're barely, you're doing a little more than one a day, and it's taking six months to, to paint 226 poles? That's, that's 38 poles a month. That's, doesn't make sense. You shouldn't, this is, this, this, this doesn't make sense. I can't, I can't understand how you could, you could authorize this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brock.
Yeah, I wanted to pull this, because I, I was concerned about the cost. It's actually $1.7000 for each pole. I did talk to staff about why the cost is high. I understand there's issues with potentially lead material in the paint that needs to be scraped, the whole pole will be tented. So there's some logic to why this is as expensive as it is, and why you need somebody who is experienced. However, I wanted to request that we, we look at the possibility of just selectively painting the base, because I think it is the base of these poles that's been damaged. I was in Montrose and did a walk-around with Mr. Ordabagian, president of the Shopping Park Association, and he showed me some of the areas that are, that are in need of repair. It really is the base that, so I, you know, I don't know if it's possible that we can just do something there, but if there's a way to look at this and, and try to come in at a lower price, I think that would be, that would be very worthwhile.
Mr. Galanian, can you address any or all of the concerns raised?
Thank you, Mayor Najarian, I'll, I'll do my best. As you know, as council knows, and some folks in the audience know, being a city, a municipality, a government entity, we have to pay prevailing wages, we don't, which are much higher, significantly higher than the regular rates that folks pay for private work. This, as Councilmember Brockman noted, these, this is not a merely painting job, although the title says painting, it includes restoration, it will include some repair of wiring inside the pole... the life of these light standards for another 10 to 15 years. So therefore, the process that we're asking for will allow us to have these lighting standards last longer and kind of match the neighborhood. I'm not sure if we paint the bottom portions of it, that it may meet the standards. In some places, it may. But in general, it's a one-piece standard. It is not separate where we could maybe isolate it. There may be a problem with mismatching paint, so we may get called up again to paint it again. Therefore, our contract was for the entire standard. That's the way we bid it. They inspected the— The companies came out, looked at everything, so, you know, what they bid was to do the entire standard.
Does this create an impact to the general fund?
This is funded through what we budgeted in the power system. It is not the general fund.
So it's not our general fund?
Correct.
That we so dearly have issues with? Right. Okay. Do my colleagues have any questions?
My question is, so, given the considerations with lead potentially in the paint in prior layers, once these poles are scraped and a new lead-free coat is applied, one—can one assume that future upkeep—and I know you mentioned the duration of what this will hopefully last—but can one assume that the future application of paint will be significantly less because there won't be necessarily the mitigation costs that we're anticipating in this time?
Yeah, councilmembers, because I can—this is correct. We were doing this so that we would make sure that they were properly taken care of and that future maintenance would be reduced.
So to the speaker from the public who had concerns, and for someone who may not be aware as to what this entailed, and I'm sure they are better informed now, that is the reason for increased cost. This isn't like the $1,300, $800 screwdrivers that the Pentagon was buying back in the '90s. This is specifically to address an issue potentially with lead in the paint that the poles have if they're scraped and then repainted.
That's correct. And just to give you a note, to replace these and put something new in there, it's anywhere from $12,000 to $18,000 each.
Just repaint them.
Yeah, so repainting is a viable option, and it will extend the life.
We're fine with repainting it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other comments from my colleagues?
I guess—
Mr. Brotman?
Yeah. Because I'm trying to, you know, decide where I want to land on this. So you're saying there really is no way to just paint the base. We couldn't just scrape the base and paint it? I mean, is the issue just that it wouldn't—there wouldn't be a good color match?
Color match, and we have the opportunity to—if there's lead, to remove it. I mean, it's a benefit in extending the entire life of the entire structure.
Councilmember Brotman, answer your question. Is it possible? Yes. Will it look aesthetically good? No.
Okay. Because we have a lot of these lights around—I mean, this is just a small subset of these lights around the city, right?
Yeah, we have about 1,000 of these types throughout the city.
So, I mean, if we're going to go do this to all the lights, we're talking considerable amount of money. I mean, yeah, I'm on the fence. I want to fix the lights. I know there have been a lot of complaints, and we do want them to look good. We want to present our—you know, our best face, especially in areas like Montrose where, you know, people come and enjoy it, and it's an attraction. So I don't want to put the kibosh on this. I really just wanted to make absolutely sure that there wasn't a lower-cost way to go at this, so. All right, thanks.
Would someone like to make a motion for four?
I'll second.
Asadryan and Kasakian, roll call, please.
Councilmembers Asadryan?
Yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Carpetian?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Thank you. That concludes our consent calendar. Let's move on to the next item.
Next are city council and staff comments. Mayor Najarian, the police chief, Manuel Sid would like to speak as well for staff comments.
Would you like priority, chief?
No, sir. We'll wait for you.
Thank you. Thank you. Let me start from my left, Councilman Carpetian. We'll start with you, and we'll just come around the dais.
All right. Happy belated Mother's Day, everyone. I want to wish everyone—my wife first, my mother, my sisters, and everyone I know and everyone in the city. We all know that mothers are the pillars of our families, and I do appreciate them personally. I also—speaking of Montrose Shopping Park Association, I attended their monthly meeting last last month, and they were also talking about for city manager. I'm pretty sure you know about it, just wanted to bring it up publicly so they know that we—we—when we go there, we bring these issues up. Their crosswalks, some of them are not painted, some of them are faded. They wanted to have more visible crosswalks, especially on Honolulu Avenue. So here, publicly, I'm requesting it. The city manager is aware of it. I know our economic development staff is there every month, and they relay the message, but this is—I wanted to bring it up publicly. Also attended Northwest Glendale's Homeroes Associations Wildfire Community Meeting. Chief Brooks was there. I didn't know he can present that well. He did very well. I'm very impressed. I haven't seen him before presenting a case or presentation. He was very good. So I want to thank the Northwest Glendale Homeroes Association for putting this event together. It was very informative. Also attended two—last two weeks, I attended two conferences, expos, trade shows, you know. That's why I wasn't here last week. I apologize for that. One was the ACT Expo, which is Advanced Clean Transportation Expo. It's a commercial vehicle technology show, basically. Since we were purchasing vehicles, electric vehicles for our fleet, especially on heavier duty, you know, transportation vehicles like dump trucks and utility trucks, I wanted to attend this expo and get some information and inform myself and educate myself as to what's going on in the industry. And I brought basically a big bucket of information for my city manager, like you don't have enough to do. So I'm going to pass this on. It will be—it will be available to everyone, my colleagues as well, if they want to take a look at what's going on with the industry. There are—most of the vehicles that they had over there were all electric vehicles, especially the larger trucks. And they had a fleet of trucks for Public Works Department, sweepers, trash trucks, dump trucks, and what have you. And the question that I had was, what is the—what is the range on these—on these trucks? And they all said, it depends. Everything was, it depends. How heavy is the truck? How much load you carry? Are you going up hills or not? And it was very informative. And they have, and interestingly enough, their vehicles that they were advertising, all of them had a price tag on it, and none of them were $1 million trucks. Like, the sweepers were $180,000 to $200,000. Just for the information, it's all here. I will—I will provide it to our—to our management team so they will know what's going on. And also, most important to me and interesting to me was the alternative fuel, the renewable natural gas. There are companies out there that even if you have a power plant, they can supply you with renewable natural gas to—for you to run on that. There was also a big company that built charging stations inland empire for big trucks, semi-trucks, delivery trucks. They had 40 slots, 43 slots, and the cost was about $40 million. And they started with 3 megawatt power, but eventually they would need 11 megawatt of megawatt hour of power to run that station 11, 12 hours a day to charge the trucks. They had—few of them were fast charges, but the rest were more like trickle charges. So in order for us to go—that's why I was mentioning in the—like, half an hour ago to our GWP director—is if you want to go fully electric on all our trucks and vehicles, especially our Public Works trucks, we need to plan our power plant that we can generate that power and supply them with the power they need to charge these batteries. Because with the solar, it's great, but it won't happen. So that's one thing that I think we all need to think about. The other one was the waste expo. And I would—I mean, I wanted to go and see what's going on with the—with the whole industry, but it had much to do with composting, big companies that they build composting, big stations and factories or facilities. And they would need about 15 to 20 acres to build a really nice composting facility for you. So—and there were smaller companies that they had pretty much everything we're looking for, like, I don't know, compostable little bags, trash bags or what have you. And so many companies from China, interestingly, that with the tariffs and everything, they were like, maybe 5% to 8% of the convention was from China, and they were—they were pushing their products. They had shredders for their landfills that you can shred whatever you have to make it smaller and more compact. The waste—and also the waste industry, they have Waste Industry Historical Society. I didn't know that, and I learned something new about them. They go way, way, way back on that issue. And the new recycling systems that they have, I think we need to look into that as well. There are modern systems. There is a—we all know plasma system that France uses that, you know, you put a big pile of trash, the size of this building minimizes this, make it small, like a big small box, but it's not allowed in the United States yet. So it's interesting when you go and see what's going on with the industry, and I learned a lot. And as I said, I would pass the information to our management team, and I hope something good will come out of it. And also Soil and Mulch, they have a—they have a newspaper, which is very interesting. So with that, that's all I have for this this week. And again, the reason I wasn't here last week because I attended this this expos. Thank you.
Mr. Kasakian?
Thank you, Mayor. First, let me just apologize and say that I unfortunately have a hard stop this evening between 8:45 and 9:00 p.m. because of childcare issue considerations. I will not be able to be here for the full duration of the meeting should it go past 9 o'clock. So to anyone who is here to speak on an item that I will not be able to hear in person, I apologize ahead of time, as well to you and to my colleagues. The next item is, as we were talking about the the painting of the light poles, which I'm glad they're finally getting done, albeit at a considerable cost. Hopefully, when the contractor is done, they'll come in at less of a cost than what we anticipate that we've programmed into that. Just driving around the city, Mr. City Manager and Mr. Hernandez, a lot of our street signs are looking a little shabby and rundown. Just the one here at the intersection of, I believe it's Wilson and Glendale Avenue is—you look at the signs, they're faded, they're a little sun-worn, and I think it's —one of the first things I recognize about any city that I drive through is the signs as well as the sidewalks. We've always taken pride, I think, as Glendaleans, of the awareness that you have driven across that boundary of our neighboring cities into Glendale as to the high quality. So it'd be great if we could look into that, perhaps. Let us know if those are on a cycle to be replaced. I remember at one point when we changed them because we changed fonts or colors, and I think you may have been in Public Works at the time, Mr. Galanian. So I'd like to just put that on my colleagues' radar. Next, I apologize if I wasn't here and my colleagues mentioned this, but I want to thank the Home and Menara Chapter for the basketball game they organized between city departments, if it did nothing else. We actually played. My council colleagues, Councilmember Carpetian, Councilmember Asadryan, were on a team together, so we can actually work all together when we want to, although I'm pretty sure we lost. I stopped keeping score when I ran out of breath, and I thank the Home and Menara Chapter for reminding me. And thank you, Chief Sid, for actually carrying our team on his back along with Mr. Peplow. I was reminded how out of shape I am, so I thank them for that time to hit the gym. As well as the other item I wanted to touch upon was, if I can ask the city clerk to bring up a few photos, and while she's bringing them up, I'll mention why I was not here. Last week, I was out of town with the Metropolitan Water District of Southern California. We had a very small streamlined delegation that flew to Washington, D.C. to meet with our representatives on the Senate side as well as people in the Bureau of Reclamation. We were advocating for a number of Metropolitan Water District projects, including trying to give updates and get some feedback on our pure water program, which is about recycling water for use, the site's reservoir project, the conveyance in the Bay Delta area. But most importantly for me was the—one of the items was Water Conservation Rebate Tax Parity Act. Currently, energy efficiency projects done in your home that—whether it be appliances that are more efficient or solar panels, those are—some of those programs are taxed—the rebates are taxed—are not considered taxable income, whereas any measures to reduce water usage on your property through appliance upgrades or by changing the landscaping around your home, anything above $600 in value is considered taxable federal income. So we were there to help support and garner support for House Resolution 1871, asking members of Congress to get as much bipartisan support for this so we have more incentives for our families to do the right thing and help conserve water. Because even though we've had a couple of wet years, we're still in a situation where we may not have enough water, especially as there are negotiations between seven states as to the water allocations from the Colorado River to the various parties involved. And the last thing I want to show is this was taken this afternoon, probably around 3:45 as I was coming into City Hall. What you see there is a robot delivery box and a gentleman walking along the same sidewalk. I think it's very clear that there's only room enough for one of them on the sidewalk. I don't believe—in let's go to the next slide because I tried to snap a quick few pictures. The gentleman, obviously, decided to move out of the way. I was reminded how out of shape I am, so I thank them for that time to hit the gym. As well as the other item I wanted to touch upon was, if I can ask the city clerk to bring up a few photos, and while she's bringing them up, I'll, I'll mention why I was not here. Last week I was out of town with the Metropolitan Water District of Southern California. We had a very small streamlined delegation that flew to Washington DC to meet with our representatives on the Senate side as well as people in the Bureau of Reclamation. We were advocating for a number of Metropolitan Water District projects, including trying to give updates and, and get some feedback on our pure water program, which is about recycling water for use, the site's reservoir project, the conveyance in the Bay Delta area. But most importantly for me was the, one of the items was Water Conservation Rebate Tax Parity Act. Currently, energy efficiency projects done in your home that, whether it be appliances that are more efficient or solar panels, those are, some of those programs are taxed, the rebates are taxed, are not considered taxable income. Whereas any measures to reduce water usage on your property through appliance upgrades or by changing the landscaping around your home, anything above $600 in value is considered taxable federal income. So we were there to help support and garner support for House Resolution 1871, asking members of Congress to get as much bipartisan support for this. So we have more incentives for our families to do the right thing and help conserve water. Because even though we've had a couple of wet years, we're still in a situation where we may not have enough water, especially as there are negotiations between seven states as to the water allocations from the Colorado River to the various parties involved. And the last thing I want to show is this was taken this afternoon, probably around 3:45 as I was coming into City Hall. What you see there is a robot delivery box and a gentleman walking along the same sidewalk. I think it's very clear that there's only room enough for one of them on the sidewalk. I don't believe, and let's go to the next slide because I tried to snap a quick few pictures. The gentleman obviously decided to move out of the way of this robot. This is now the second time I've seen these devices on our city sidewalks. I don't believe we have any type of regulation by the council to allow for these. I don't know under what rules or guidelines these delivery robots are taking over our streets. And I'd like us to schedule something as soon as possible to address the takeover of these sidewalks by these machines. You know, we don't even currently, as the law stands in the city of Glendale, allow bicycles, young children on bikes to ride on the sidewalks. And yet we are allowing these robots to run amok. Again, it, this is one of the things that city council should be charged with doing, new technology, addressing it, how it's used in our city, when, where, time, place appropriateness of it. And I want to show this because I've just noticed them. I heard one of my colleagues say that they see them more often or all the time. First time or second time I'm seeing this, I want to bring that to our attention. And that is all. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Asatriyan.
I actually had taken some pictures of these robots I saw. One of them couldn't get off the street and was creating traffic on Wilson. I think I had emailed our Public Works Director on this, but anyway, Happy Mother's Day to all the moms out there. I think this was also a reminder to check in on the childcare on campus. That's been on the dock for a while. I don't know where we're at. But also, I've raised this privately, but looking at lactation accommodations for moms that are returning to work. I don't think that these are things that we should be talking about on the dais or should be brought up, but work through our HR in how we create a more supportive working environment for mothers because we have to support them, not just say Happy Mother's Day and give them flowers and move on. So speaking of Homed Menara, Brooks in the back was also part of our team. And I would actually say that he carried the team, according to the videos I saw. I didn't play any part in it. I just, it almost felt like I was walking. They didn't even know where I needed to stand, but was there for it all. Also, I want to say thank you to our fire service team for putting together the Fire Service Day this last weekend and making pancakes. Love seeing that event and love seeing our police department and the rest of our departments participating in that, in that activity. This Thursday is our Senior Fest, right behind the City Hall in the plaza, from 10:30 to 1:30. That's put together by our Parks Department. And then Glendale Dodger Night is this Friday, May 16, 7:00 PM. So I know that the city employees always get together and go, but my hope is that we make this a bigger event and invite the larger community to come join. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brock.
Okay, just two quick things. One, I've noticed that our agendas are coming out later and later. This week, we didn't get our agenda, or last week, didn't get our agenda packet until Friday, and I think it was the same the week before. We had had a discussion years ago where we agreed to get these packets issued, I think it was goal of Wednesday's with no later than Thursday, and it's slipping. So I want to express my frustration and hope that we can get these put out in a more timely manner so that we all have time to read our reports. That's number one. The second thing I wanted to mention is, we all know about the concerns of the Oakmont Woods neighborhood because of the school that's, that's moved in there. It's on a temporary basis, but nonetheless. And I would like to ask that we organize a, an evacuation drill because their concerns are not just about the school, it's also about the Locker Center project. It's about the fact that they only have one way in and out into that neighborhood. And I think it would be a good idea to demonstrate how an evacuation would work in that kind of a scenario. We've done that, I know, with Chevy Chase Canyon at Glen Oaks Canyon, which on a much larger scale, but, but share some similar characteristics. So I think that would be a very healthy thing to do. It would demonstrate to the community how we, how we would handle a situation like that. Because I think there's a misunderstanding that cars would be coming in to pick up the kids. And I don't think that's how it would work in an evacuation. Cars would only be going one way, which is out. And we would be directing that, and I'm sure we would be turning all the lanes on Locker Center Avenue into the one direction where traffic needs to flow. But I think people need to see that and understand it. So I would just ask that we consider organizing something for that neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. And just briefly, last Wednesday, following the presentation at City Council, Councilmember Brotman, myself and other city staff celebrated Arbor Day in Perkins Plaza. And we appropriately planted two trees, well, we posed with the shovels actually, but staff did the hard work of digging the hole and filling it in. So that was wonderful that we're adding to our canopy here in Perkins Plaza. And also, this week, I met with a delegation from Yerevan, Armenia, businessmen, manufacturers who are interested in looking at Glendale to either sell some of their products or to be involved in locating a manufacturing facility for their products out here. And this is an annual, seems to be an annual visit that they make, and it was nice hosting them. And Glendale still carries a little bit of awe back in, in Armenia. And that's all I have. Chief, you ready to go? Who are these fine young officers that you have with you?
These fine, well, good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. These fine new officers I have with me are our newest police officers here in the city of Glendale, fresh out of the academy as of Friday evening. And I wanted to take a quick opportunity to a group we're really proud of and introduce them to the city council and to our community. So joining me with these four here, I've got Annette Terosian. Annette. Annette's born and raised Glendale and is a proud graduate of Glendale High School. She was previously with our department for, I think, the last two years, working out of our records section. And now is one of our newest police officers. Also joining us, Jamie Polis, he's back here, a Marine Corps veteran back in 2010. And I don't get to often say this, but stole her from the fire department. She was an ambulance operator at GFD, so now joining us is one of our newest police officers. Also with us is Matthew Lopez. Matthew was raised in Pasadena, is one of six, big family, and he's pursuing his bachelor's degree at Cal State LA. Last, and certainly not least, is Mr. Tim Kim. Tim's been with us. He's a graduate of NYU. He was previously with us for, I think, pushing almost the last year, year and a half as a PSO. And a little special note about Tim, we're, we're extra proud of him. He graduated the academy, top of the class, and was the honor recruit, which is essentially the class's valedictorian. I think the third that we've had in the last year, so we're really proud of him and joining us. So a really good group, we're excited about them, really sharp. They have been back in the building with us now for a couple of days. They'll spend a couple of weeks getting trained up, doing some range training and a few other things before they go into service with their training officers. They'll spend about six months in field training. Once they're able to navigate that, they'll be out on their own, fully functioning, new police officers. So want to welcome them and thank you all for your continued support as we continue to fill our ranks. Thank you all.
Thank you, officers. I want you to know you're joining one of the best police departments in all of the country. You've got a great chief, great command staff with the captains and lieutenants and sergeants, and a great community to serve. And most important, a great city council that always likes to pay close attention to your good work. So welcome to Glendale. Councilmember Asatriyan.
I just want to say welcome. We'll forgive you for going to Glendale High School, at least I will. I know Councilmember Kasakian is excited about that. But welcome aboard. And I know that this week is also National Police Week, and so want to say thank you to all who make the ultimate sacrifice, to the families that, that support you guys in the important work you do. And as I've always said, here in Glendale, we're, we set the example for, I think, not just the state, but for the country to follow what it means to be truly a model for community policing. I love that we say that, you know, we don't take public safety lightly in Glendale. We're tough on crime, but we also know how to be one with our community. So thank you for your service and welcome aboard.
Other comments? Okay, thank you very much, Chief. Good job in the recruitment. When did you turn in the card, Mr. Moho? No, you can, you can include it in your other...
Come on, it's positive.
Oh my God. In that case, no.
It's not on the general area.
Mr. Galanian, are there any other comments from staff or anyone here? Dictator Ara, headlines, dictator Ara runs the city. Next, please. Next on the agenda.
Illegitimate is better.
Illegitimate. I forgot that part.
Dictator was already taken.
Next, please.
Next is community event announcements, three minutes, five speaker limit per mayor policy. This item also permits speakers wishing to speak under general oral communications, subject to the three-minute time limit. Discussion is limited to matters not on the agenda. We have a number of cards on this item. The first speaker is Hans Johnson. You have three minutes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'm Hans Johnson. I'm here representing the East Area Progressive Democrats. It was my pleasure to say thank you to the police chief for the extraordinary service of Glendale's police at our recent rally. Last month, I believe, we may have had one of the largest gatherings in Glendale this calendar year with more than 4,000 people on April 5th for the hands-off rally here at the Social Security Office. But I'm here today to make a comment regarding something that transpired at the last meeting. And it's an issue of concern for our members involving the separation of church and state and the respect for diversity here in Glendale and in our cities more broadly. But in Glendale in particular, an effort was announced at the last meeting to shift responsibility for invocations away from the city clerk and the oversight of the city clerk's office. And a remarkable record of inclusive invocations and inclusive representation in those invocations that I want to call attention to. Because at a time of division, at a time of increasing polarization, and at a time of increasing politicization of religion, it's important for the voices that are brought before our city councils in our public gatherings to be as representative and as broadly inclusive as possible. I would want to call attention to the voices of women clergy, of the poet laureate here of the city of Glendale, of the recent director of the MLK Walk here in the city, of an Orthodox minister who was invited, and also, I think, the chaplain of the largest hospital in town who was here. But it's worth reminding, especially in light of binding Supreme Court precedent, that not all religions and not all religious voices are monotheistic. And that all the voices that should be included in the invocations, all of the faith traditions and denominations that should be included in our invocations should be reflected. And any move to transfer responsibility about those inclusive voices away from the successful track record of the recent, of the recent past few years is one that raises concern about what that move might be premised on. And so I want to call attention to that. I think that needs to be scrutinized. And I think we need to make sure that no move is made here in Glendale that risks costly litigation over that exercise or over that transfer, or that degrades the inclusivity of those messages. In Glendale in particular, the recognition of diversity is a strong point. Even tonight, we've seen the recognition of the local Jewish community, we've seen the recognition of the local API community, and that is a hallmark of the city, especially as increased diversity deserves recognition in the council's own actions and the voices before the council. Please take that into account before moving to transfer that function. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Tony Passarella. You have three minutes.
Good evening, council and staff. Tony Passarella. I'm a bicycle enthusiast. I have two bicycles. I ride my bikes at the LA River Bike Path, or I will haul my bike down to Santa Monica Beach and ride on that bike path, as I have done for the last 10 years, every Saturday, weather permitting. I ride for enjoyment and exercise. I don't ride in the city. Too dangerous. Your pilot program has already been in place in Santa Monica, Mr. Brotman, for the last eight years. Since 2017, when Bird first launched a dockless scooter program, and Lime followed in 2018 with an e-scooter and an e-bike program. That is what I see. If Suzie could put up the pictures. That's not a hazard. Next picture, Suzie? That's not a hazard on the, on the bike path in Santa Monica. Just imagine that, wow. Just imagine that in the Jewel City. That's what's gonna happen. I see that as a hazard, spoiling of natural beauty. Of course, it's a different environment. Mechanical litter, if you will. Is this what you really want for the Jewel City? I'll say that again. Is this what, because it's gonna happen. Hundred percent. There's no regulations that are gonna stop it. Or enhance safety measures, nothing, nothing's gonna work. Now, let's talk about regulation and enforcement of the laws. No amount of regulation is going to change people's behavior when there's no ownership involved. They're gonna be reckless. I took some more, I took like 20 pictures. A lot of these scooters are all scraped up on the side and handlebars are twisted. I mean, it's crazy. How about enforcement of laws concerning e-scooters? First, the California code. Riders must be 18, wear a helmet. Class 3 riders speeds up to 28 miles an hour must wear a helmet regardless of age. From here, it gets very, very confusing regardless where bikes can be ridden, the equipment for bikes, passengers restrictions, enforcement. I mean, it's, 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 it's gonna be a zoo. E-scooters must ride, have a valid driver's license, 16 to ride, 18 to rent. It's gonna be a minefield, people. It's gonna be a minefield. Already, I saw that robot, I saw a robot on Isabel coming over here in Lexington. Imagine mixing those robots, and it's gonna be hypocritical what you do with those robots if you don't, because you can't enforce these scooters and these bikes. They're running ragged right now on the streets of Glendale. Imagine what it's gonna be now with the robots and the bikes and the scooters not being enforced.
Thank you, Mr. Passarella. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Mike Moho. You have three minutes.
Good evening, Glendale citizens. My name is Mike Moho. I'm a US veteran, including Vietnam. I served this country. And this city council won't have the camera on my face. And Mr. Brotman just left the council room. Thank you, dictator, dictator Dan. Now, one of the things I want to talk before you wouldn't let me speak about the police department here, Mr. Mayor, is the reason why Glend...
Illegitimate man.
You got that one right. Because you know dictator and tyrant had already been taken care of. Our good Chief Sid came from Culver City. Because at that time, Black Lives Matter was rampant, all that stuff that was going on. And he came to Glendale. Why do you think he chose Glendale? Because it's a safe city. And why is it a safe city? Honestly, it's not the police department and it's not the mayor. It's all the men and women who live in Glendale. It's the citizens of Glendale that make Glendale a good, safe city. We have low prime in this city. Yeah, we have speeders on the freeways and the streets, but you don't see burglaries and robberies as in other cities. So Glendale is a safe city. So Glendale is a safe city. So I had office to the new police officers, but remember, Glendale is a safe city because of the people. Now, this is the people's form, and because of that, we should have the camera on the face of the speaker, not the back of his head. This is not a dictatorship. I'm wearing my hat to let you know that I fought for this country. I was in the military for three years while you all were resting at the beaches. So you can say I live in Glendale, but what have you done? Have any of you ever given any service to this country? Have any of you, for example, spent time at the VA office? Given time? It's nice to be here and talk about, hey, Veterans Day is coming up, and we're going to go to all the different veterans' events. But what have you individually done to show your allegiance? You can raise a flag, which is nice. But why don't you actually give a day a month and volunteer? They always need volunteers. The Veterans VA Hospital. Okay, remember, and this is not a... You know, I say this man came up with separation of church and state. That's bullshit. Pardon my language. That's not written in the Constitution. That's a political statement. So let's get the words correctly. This is not a country of separation of church and state. Thank you.
Well, thank you for your service, Mr. Mohill. You're right. Nothing that I've done to this point in my life can match those who've put their lives on the line for this country. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Dr. Jackie Gish. You have three minutes.
I'm actually doing a community event announcement during the community events part. Let's Go Glendale is Saturday, May 31st. For those of you that aren't aware of it, it's when Glendale Avenue will be closed to cars, from Chevy Chase to Lexington. GEC is looking very much forward to participating, as are a number of other organizations, I'm sure. I wanted to say that when we were in Madrid last year, the big boulevard in front of the hotel was closed on Saturday or Sunday or both, and it was great to see people with their children walking in the street, wheeling baby carriages, bicycling, all that kind of stuff, and being able to use the full street. And I'm looking forward to this event in Glendale. Thank you.
It is a great event. This is our second open streets event with large sponsorship from Metro, and we are also finding or searching for additional funding sources to help cover some of the city's expenses because we do have overtime police, fire, street closures to make sure it's a safe event. But come on out, May 31st. You can bike, walk, stroll, skate, scoot, scooter, if I dare say, anything like that in a very safe environment with fun and music and all that.
And wheelchairs are okay, too.
Anything that... No cars. Essentially, no cars or trucks. Next, please.
Next is the final speaker who's on air. Emmanuel, you have three minutes. You're on air.
Hi. Good evening, members of the council. So I wanted to talk a little bit tonight about Metro and public transportation. I hear calls, and I come across pushing for expanding public transportation at all levels, bus lanes, rail, new lines, and other forms of transportation. And I don't know if many people are aware, but Metro does not have a very positive record in terms of what it does to the quality of life. So on the West Side, we can almost single-handedly blame Metro for causing a mass increase in vagrancy, camping on sidewalks, crime, shoplifting, and so much more because of Metro's light rail stations on the West Side and in Santa Monica. And I hear this call for installing bus lanes on Glen Oaks. And I got to say, my experience with that, at least for me, has not been a very positive one. Every time lately when I tried to come... When I tried to link up to Glendale from Northeast L.A. on Alvarado, and when I drive on Alvarado between Rolshire and Sunset, I come across a bus lane when I'm headed north. And this bus lane causes massive congestion. It's a very poor fit for the area, and it doesn't accomplish a whole lot. I mean, we have a one lane that's empty and a bus comes along every 15 minutes. It's absolutely illogical. And I would also observe that here in Glendale, we have more supply of public transportation than what is in demand. I regularly come across our B-line buses, especially the Number 3 route, that has no passengers inside. And so I would just recommend for folks to think twice about expanding Metro's presence here in the city because there's frankly not enough demand for it. I mean, just the other day, I drove from the West Side to downtown L.A. It was a 15- to 20-minute ride in the afternoon. If I took Metro's light rail, it would have taken 45 to 50 minutes. And so the average person would prefer to drive because time is money. And so I really think, you know, we should be hesitant about expanding Metro's presence in Glendale. It could have potentially a disastrous outcome like we have seen on the West Side. And so anyway, thank you for your time. Have a good night.
Thank you, and that is all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, is there anyone that was denied speaking at this portion due to our limitation on number of speakers?
Not today.
Thank you. Next up are the action items, and I want to make sure that we don't lose Mr. Kusakian, although we're doing eh. So what I'd like to do is exercise my discretion as dictator to put item 8... Wrong word. I'm sorry. To put item 8C first. If you could please read 8C into the record.
Yes. 8C is Management Services Regarding Appointment of Glendale's Three Members to the Burbank-Glendale-Pacadena Airport Authority Commission. One motion appointing three individuals to the Airport Commission for four-year terms commencing June 1st, 2025.
Mr. Galanian.
Yes, Mayor Najarian, member of city council. As you are aware, we currently have three representatives on the Burbank-Glendale-Pacadena Airport Authority Commission, and terms of which will concurrently expire on May 31st of 2025. So in accordance with the JPA agreement, the city councils of each city will need to appoint three members to the commission to serve four-year terms, which will start on June 1st, 2025.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, what's the best procedural way to handle three appointees?
Mr. Mayor, it's really up to the council's discretion if you want to... If somebody's desires of making nominations of all three or of taking one at a time after you've had obviously time to discuss the matter.
Okay, let me first state that I did receive communication from Mr. Quintero, who is an incumbent. He currently sits on the Airport Commission, and he has expressed his desire to be reappointed to that position, and he is a non-council member. There is no requirement that the members of the... Any members of the nominating or JPA-membered cities fill their positions with council members. Some cities have all council members, some cities have no council members. So let me turn to my colleagues and see if there's any questions or comments on this item.
Well, if I might...
Mr. Brotman.
Yeah. As I've mentioned several times when this has come up, I have an interest in serving on the Airport Commission. However, in light of the fact that we have three people, and I guess I would... Two of them are sitting here on the dais. I would like to hear if they have an interest in continuing. If the two of you want to continue, then my suggestion would be we just reappoint the three existing members for another four-year term. But if either of you are not interested in continuing, then I would like to be considered for that seat.
Councilmember Saturian, yours currently on the board. Would you seek reappointment?
Yes, I would.
Thank you. I'm currently on the board, serving as president. I would like to seek reappointment as well. Any other comments or questions?
Questions. So, Mr. Mayor, you mentioned some cities have all council members, some don't. Which cities have all council members?
Actually, as I was thinking through, I misspoke. Pasadena has two and one, two elected, one former. Burbank has all non-elected. Their city manager, of all people, is sitting... Don't get any ideas, Mr. Galanian.
Former city manager.
Former city manager.
Required by law, though.
Oh, are they? Burbank...
Yes.
Oh, are they?
Yes, because it's in their city. They're required to have...
To have a former...
They're required to have non-council members.
Non-elected.
And Glendale, of course, in the past, I think...
There has been a short period of time, I think, where we had three council members on the commission, but currently, as you noted, it's been a while.
So, all right, thank you for that clarification. That's what I believe was the situation. I've always stated publicly that having, I think, you know, most of us are concerned about three council members being anywhere. We're constantly reminded by staff to be cognizant, aware, and be careful in terms of perceptions. There's been, you know, concerns that if any of us, if three of any people are anywhere, it's a violation of the Brown Act. The Brown Act meaning that when a majority of this body is anywhere discussing issues that can potentially be before council that we would have to vote on, there is a concern that that would violate the law if the conversations occur. So I think, you know, I've stated that I believe that we should continue along with the practice of having two council members, and when one layperson, if you will, non-elected person, could be a former elected official, as council member Quintero is, could be a member of our staff, as we've had in the past, when we had at that time, I believe, Police Lieutenant, not yet Chief, Carl Povellitis, serving because of his background and knowledge in aviation. So I would like to maintain that, if possible. My only question would be, since Mayor Najarian has announced that he is not seeking reelection in the event that, you know, not in the event, when he is no longer on council and he's appointed to a four-year term, what happens logistically or technically to that seat?
Councilman Kusakian, so under the JPA governing the Airport Authority, it provides that if an elected official, if a sitting council member is serving as the representative of the city for that jurisdiction, if they are no longer a member of that city council, their seat is automatically forfeited on Airport Authority unless they are subsequently put back on by their council.
All right. So there's a potential that we would have to revisit it? If it's... If the current members stay as they are?
That's correct.
And as a general sense, the commissioners serve at the pleasure of the council. Is that correct?
Yes.
If for some reason it was necessary to remove a sitting commissioner, the council had that... Has that discretion?
That's correct.
And one last question in terms of appointments. Why now? Or is this when it is written that the terms are up?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. Any other comments? Mr. Garbatsian?
Yes, thank you. Just like Councilman Brotman, I do have an interest in this position as well, but I would not put my nomination forward because, as I mentioned two or three weeks ago, I would never allow this council to vote against me anymore. I think this decision is already made, like the Housing Authority Chair, that was done last week. But I think we need to have a policy, not only for this position, for any position. If you seek nomination or renomination, or you want to be appointed to a position, you need to attend the meetings. You need to... If you are there to represent the city, you need to attend the meetings. It's me, it's whoever, any of us. Councilmember Saturian, only... Airport Commission has two positions. One is the commission position, one is the subcommittees that they have, and every commissioner is a member of that committee. So far, Councilmember Saturian only attended four out of 17 meetings and one out of 17 subcommittee meetings. Any of us who takes these positions, we need to attend the meetings because if you're representing the city, you have to be there. I know we get busy sometimes here and there. Some people have time, some people have more time, some people have a little time. If time doesn't allow it, I don't think we should do it. But just to be fair, we have to have a process for people to attend these meetings, especially Airport. They have... It's early in the morning. Your subcommittee meeting starts at 8:00. Your Airport Commission meeting starts at 9:00. So you have to get up at 7:00 and be there at 8:00. That's all I'm saying, for all of our positions, not only this one. We need to attend the meetings. That's all.
Councilmember Saturian?
So had my colleague actually spoken to me prior to this meeting, I would have been able to have a more open conversation about the reason. I'm just going to leave it at there was a medical obligation that required for me to be on the West Side during that time period. That treatment process is now done, and so the minute it was done, I was able to go. Those parties that needed to be aware were aware. And I'll just add, you know, Mr. Garbatsian, last time you brought this up, I was... I actually don't agree with Mr. Kusakian about having a non-member. I think it's better when you have council members sitting there. And so you actually had my support, but where you lost me before the vote was when I asked you, why do you want to serve on this board, on the Burbank Airport Authority Board? There was not a single thing you said about why you wanted to serve. What you ended up doing was bashing former mayor and council member Quintero and basically noting he needs to go spend time with his grandchildren, and anytime somebody attempts to tarnish somebody else in order to get what they want, they lose me. And so, you know, your comments and questioning today say a whole lot more about you than they do about me.
I did not tarnish Mr. Quintero.
Okay. Well, perhaps go look at the video.
Yeah, and this has been happening since April of last year, so...
Right. Okay.
There are other events that everyone else is attending, so that's what I'm saying. If you're taking a position, you need to...
So I would have appreciated that as a colleague, you had a conversation with me, if that was a concern to you.
Well, I understand that, but...
Right. Okay.
No, no. Hold on a second. As a colleague, I try to communicate in the past with almost all of you, and...
I have granted you every opportunity to communicate with me.
Okay, let's hear from the speaker, and then we can pick it up if we need to.
Mike Mohill.
Evening, council members. My name is Mike Mohill.
My name is Mike Mohill. Isn't this an interesting discussion, the appointment to the Airport Commission? It's just the same, same deal, back, backdoor deals. I mean, how is it that the former mayor of Glendale, Alan Asatirian, became the chairman of the Housing Authority? That never happened before. You keep making rules up as you go. You can make rules, Mr. Garcia, City Attorney, and then you go ahead and break them. Why don't you solve this problem by having non-council members on this board? It doesn't have to be political. There are many people in this community who have an aviation background, who understand aviation, they don't understand politics. Do you want a politician at the, at the Airport Commission? Or you want someone who's technical and understands how an airport runs? I don't think any one of you have an aviation background, but you're all politicians because that's why you're up there. So why don't you delegate this important job and put a feeler out to the community and say, hey, any businessman who's interested and has a background in aviation related, that would be wonderful. Not one of you five people have any background. I'm sorry, Mr. Carpe, and all five of you guys, okay? I'm sorry. None of you have this background. You wing it every time you go to a meeting. And then if you don't feel well, you don't go to that meeting because maybe it's too early in the morning. You have to make a commitment, you know, commitment, C-O-M-M-I-T-T-E. I think that's how you spell it, isn't it? Let's get people who want the job, we don't need politicians, because you only put it, the only reason you want to have the commission, because when you fill out your resume, when you run for your next office, you can say, oh, I've been on the Airport Commission, oh, I've been on the Housing Commission. But what have you done that deserves this recognition, other than to say, my name is, thank you?
Mr. Kusakian?
Mr. Mayor, there are no more speakers, correct?
Yes, there are no, no more speakers.
Seeing as to how there are three current members, all three have expressed an interest to continue to serve. I understand that at least two, two of my colleagues have both expressed an interest, but given that there's already individuals serving in those capacities who wish to continue to serve, I would like to make the motion that we reappoint all three commissioners for the next term.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Before we go to roll call.
And just for record, that's Mayor.
That would be Asatirian, Najarian, and Quintero.
Yes.
And before we go to roll call, I just want to frame this so people know what we're talking about. When we say Airport Commission, we're talking about the Hollywood Burbank Airport, which is jointly administered by the three cities of Glendale, Pasadena, and Burbank. Each of those cities nominates and appoints three individuals to serve on that board. And it's not just aviation. In fact, there's very, there's very little to do with the aviation, but what there's a lot going on now is about construction, as a new passenger terminal is being put in, about finance, because there are close to a billion dollar in bonds being put forward. It's about transportation in and around the, the airport, it's about parking, it's about administration, picking a CEO, it's about government advocacy, traveling to Sacramento, Washington, and other areas to advocate for funding. It's about safety understanding, there is a police force there, it's about customer service, so it's also noise issues are involved. There's a lot of components to this, and it's, it's a rather unusual organization, joint powers, really does a lot of things. Those that are, are interested, please follow, there's a website that tells you what's going on. And there are some politics involved, there are threats by some other politicians to force a takeoff path that would go directly over the city of Glendale. Now, you don't need to be an aviator to know that that's not good for the city council. For the city, you need someone who is in tune with the concerns of our residents to give a little pushback and make sure that nothing adverse is occurring to the city of Glendale. And that just is a small capsulization of what the Burbank Airport is all about. It's about energy efficiency, it's about environmental friendliness and stewardship. Many, many things go into it. It's like running a mini-city, in effect. So that's what it's all about, and I'll cut myself off at this time, and let's go to roll call.
Oh, is there a second?
There was.
Councilmember Asatirian?
Yes.
Brodmann?
Yes.
Carpe?
Stained.
Kusakian?
Yes.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes. Thank you. Let's go back to our regular order.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, I know we have two heavy action items, and we also have a new business agenda item that we discussed last, last week, and we had to carry over because we didn't have a full house. I'm concerned about running out of time on that item. Can we move that forward? Or can we perhaps push one of the agenda items, I'm sorry, one of the action items off to our next meeting, given that I think we want a full council for all of these items?
Well, that's a request. What do my colleagues think about that? One is to either take out of order the discussion of future agenda requests, I'm presuming 12A you're referring to specifically, or to knock out one of the remaining agenda items, which is the, action items, which is the mayor selection policy and the council meeting procedures in decorum.
If I might, my recommendation would be to push the mayor selection policy. I think that'll be much more open-ended and take, potentially take a lot of time.
So let's treat that as a motion, if we may. Do we have to read that into the record and then move it?
You don't have to.
We don't need to do that. So the proposal to put off the mayor selection to, I know next week sounded pretty heavy, Mr. Takhtalian. Is there a lighter, is there a lighter agenda in a few weeks subsequent to that?
Mayor Najarian, lighter is a subjective term. We quite busy for the next few weeks. We will have at least three or four action items, so.
Okay, I don't want to push this off because we had tried to discuss this, there was an intention to discuss this earlier last year, so I don't want to put it off indefinitely. I'd like to have it sooner in the process than later. How would you recommend we deal with that?
So if, if the council is inclined to push that particular item off, then what we'll do tomorrow is go back and look at the agendas and find the, the first agenda that we can put it on that's not too heavy at this point. That's, we'll shoot for something and, you know, I don't, I don't have the.
Colleagues okay with that? Mr. Brodmann's okay. Mr. Kusakian?
I'm fine with that.
Mr. Carpe?
I don't mind sitting here and going through all of them, but whatever.
Nor do I, but I think in accommodation to.
I have to leave by anywhere between 8:45 and 9:00, and the reason being because my childcare ends at 9:00. And by childcare, I mean I don't want to leave my son at my parents' home indefinitely, given that he has to be at school at a reasonable, at startup school day tomorrow.
Understood.
Would you like a note from the mayor that his dad was detained and?
If it were only that easy, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so I, I don't have a, I don't have a problem, number one, accommodating, primarily accommodating Councilmember Kusakian and his childcare situation.
Mr. Mayor, if I may make a suggestion, if you're so inclined to move that item forward, why don't we do that and see how much time going to elapse, and maybe we'll be able to fit that mayor selection item in?
So you're suggesting do 12, 12A first?
8A, oh, 12A first?
If that's what the council is inclined to do so.
I don't want to get halfway through the discussion, though, because I know Mr. Kusakian has valuable input for that. We all will have valuable input.
So what I'm saying, when the next 20, 30 minutes, we will know where we stand as far as the time is concerned, and then we can decide then.
Just hold it to the end.
We'll take it off, we'll take it off, Mr. Do we need a formal vote for that?
Unless there's objection.
So, so the.
So item 8B will come off?
Direction would be to take 8B off and to put it at the next reasonably available city council agenda. Okay, so, again, the discussion of the mayor selection policy is off tonight's calendar and will be taken up at a future date as determined, and we'll announce that next week, so everyone interested can pin it on their calendars. Well, I guess the suggestion is then we go to 12A at this point, because I'm not sure, I'm not sure 8A is going to be a short one either.
Okay.
Let's go to 12A. Madam Clerk, will you read 12A into the?
12A, discussion of councilmember future agenda requests. A councilmember, Brodmann's request to agendize a sponsorship of up to $5,000 of Glendale Out's Pride Event on June 7, 2024 at Adams Square Mini Park, continued from May 6, 2025 council meeting.
If I might, I want to, last time we discussed this, I didn't make it clear at the outset that the funding would actually go to Glendale Arts. Glendale Arts will be the fiscal sponsor for this event. They will take the money from the city of Glendale, they will make all the disbursements. If any of the members of Glendale Out have any expenditures on the event, they can submit those expenditures for reimbursement with receipts, and, and that will be the role of Glendale Arts as the fiscal sponsor. So I don't think that was clear, and I know, Mr. Mayor, you had some concerns about the lack of transparency of Glendale Out, and that's natural because they're a grassroots organization without a formal legal structure, and that is why this fiscal sponsorship route was arranged, so that this would actually work, because I don't think we can provide sponsorship dollars to a, a club that doesn't have any kind of legal standing. So I wanted to make that clear, and I think the rest of it probably goes without saying. This is a, a pride event at Adams Square Mini Park. It would be similar to the ones that have been held in the past. If you've been to any of those, you will know that they are fun, friendly, family-oriented events, people have a good time, and there's really nothing that should be of any controversy to anybody at these events. Many, many cities, all of our neighbors, do events like this. Some, like Pasadena, run them themselves, others like Burbank use the similar model that I'm proposing here, where a nonprofit organizes the event and the city sponsors with, with dollars. I think that's about all I'll say at this time.
Okay, we do have some speakers. Are there any comments from council at this point?
I can make a few comments, but I'd like to hear from the speakers first.
Okay, I, I do want to make a comment, and you had mentioned Glendale Arts previously, Mr. Brodmann, and, and that's fine, they are a little more transparent. The problem I have now is that I think a family member of yours is on the board of Glendale Arts. I'm not sure that that's permissive under our policy to give money to a board or organization upon which we have a family member sitting as a director. I'm not, do we have such rules?
Mayor Najarian, we, we do not have any specific policy that regarding a board member who may be related to a council member for the purpose of, you know, when that board member's an uncompensated board member for a nonprofit, obviously, if it's a, if it's a for-profit entity, that's a different story, there are probably conflict interest laws will be applicable, but in this case, they are not, and we don't have a policy that addresses this particular issue.
I have a problem with that personally, but let's go to the speakers.
Our first public comment is by Gray James.
Neither Glendale Out nor anyone in it is associated with Glendale Extremist Network. Responsibly researched and thoroughly documented, it has only ever responded to the hate, harassment. I did have media, sorry. It has only ever responded to the hate, harassment, disinformation, and violence around us. They are good and dear allies to this community, we are happy to share their information. Opening, opining, opining an art show as pornographic does not make it pornographic. Glendale Out is a grassroots organization, just like it says on our website, which you can just Google if you don't have staffers. We accept donations via Venmo, just like it says on our website. Because we are not a 501(c)(3), our sources for donations are limited to community generosity. The money is spent on a scholarship, projects, and activities, all posted on our socials, which are public. We are grateful to Glendale Arts for being our fiscal sponsor. Glendale Arts has been our fiscal sponsor in the past and continues to do so currently. I hope this helps Aura with your continued insecurities about our opaqueness. I see your fans used your muddled and confused disinformation to target me, your sister Mauro commenting again, again, again. No assless chaps.
Next speaker.
Next speaker is Beth Brooks.
Hi, as you may or may not know, I sent a letter, and then I also sent an email about what I think about the city, you know, funding Glendale Out, and I want to apologize profusely, I'm ready to cry, to Mr. James, because I think that I ended up only attacking him personally, as opposed to my whole point and everything is funding, why are you spending money in places you shouldn't be spending money? Why are you, I mean, you know that. I don't believe you should be spending money on demographics, but I was totally wrong. I got a lot of wrong information. I attacked him, his morality. I mean, I felt that I, I, I felt that I was a spokesperson, even though I'm not a spokesperson, for more conservative people in the city who would see this as a very controversial group, and because of the controversy, they shouldn't get money. You know that, I don't think that you should be giving money based upon race, gender, religion, anything like that. I think you have to look at Glendale as a whole and just help people, especially people who are in need, and you know my mission is always about renters, who never get any money. Okay, we have $5,000 here and $10,000 here, and renters never get any money. But I attacked him on a moral basis. I attacked his art, which he does in a personal, in his personal capacity, and I was totally, totally wrong. And I apologize to him, I apologize to all of you that I did that. But it was about that, I don't think that you should fund things, especially when there are GoFundMes and there is GiveSendGo, and they can use that money. We can't keep, keep on like this, we can't, you can't just have a shopping list that you just throw out money here and there, $5,000 here, $10,000 here, a police car that was $150,000, that is not even part of the EV mandate in California, just to see how it goes. You can't, you, you have to tighten your belts, we had a budget session, you can't keep throwing out money. But my biggest point is to apologize to this man, because that was horrible, what I did.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Mike Mohill.
My name is Mike Mohill. Thank you, Beth. You know, in my newsletter that came out today. You know, in my newsletter that came out today, I talked a great deal about this organization, Glendale Out. It's not about hating gay people, transgender people. It's really about money. If, like Beth says, if they, all they need is $5,000, there is a website called GoFundMe. I've done that to raise money for my newsletter. Let Glendale Out or any organization who wants $5,000 more to set up a GoFundMe account. Why don't you use that $5,000 and pay for a cop? We don't have enough police officers. We don't have money. We have $1.2 billion in pension obligation that you're not covering. This city's in debt, and you know it. If you don't have to spend $5,000 for a feel-good organization, hey, I feel good to want it. Hey, you know what? I'm going to start something myself personally, and why don't you fund me and send me $5,000? Now, last year, Ms. Sisatrian wanted $5,000 for the black groups for a scholarship, but why not a Jewish group or Italian group? Quit pandering to special interest groups. Why don't you pander to the taxpayers of Glendale? We voted for you to make those good decisions, Mr. Brotman, Ms. Sisatrian. You're talking behind my back while I'm speaking to you? How rude you are. Where did you learn mannerism? Oh, I forgot. You're both either a dictator or a tyrant. Now, let's get back to the subject matter. $5,000. We don't have that money. Forget about morality right now. Let's talk about dollars and cents. There's a thing called GoFundMe account. Go get it that way, Mr. Gray James. Don't ask the taxpayers of Glendale to support your feel-good organization and the people on this council who support you. You know, the transgender organization hijacked the gay and lesbian movement a long time ago. This is the transgender organization. It's not a gay lesbian organization. Thank you very much.
Next is Dr. Jackie Yish.
Mayor Nigarian and city council members, first of all, thank you for the opportunity to talk today. I want to voice my support for the sponsorship for Glendale Out's Pride in the Park event. Glendale Arts will responsibly spend the sponsorship funds to ensure a fun, welcoming, and safe space for anyone who wants to attend. Glendale's diversity is one of its strengths, and the LGBTQ+ community is definitely deserving of Glendale's support. When I grew up in Glendale, there was virtually no diversity in race, religion, nor ethnicity. And LGBTQ+ was never talked about. I want everyone to feel comfortable in Glendale regardless of their identity and for all to celebrate that diversity. Please agendize this item.
Next speaker.
Next speaker is Judd Hollander.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen of the council. Longtime listener, first time caller. Thank you for having me. I just wanted to voice my opinion as a citizen that I love this event. It's super fun. I bring my family, my wife and kid. We have a great time. I love that Glendale is welcoming of so many different people. We celebrated Jewish American Heritage Month earlier tonight and Asian American Pacific Islanders, and I think we should also continue to celebrate our LGBTQ population. They're fantastic. This is what I love about this city. I've lived here about 10 years now, and I've, you know, the previous speaker just mentioned that when she was a child, there was no diversity. All I know of Glendale is diversity, and this is why we love this city so much and my family. You guys have all done a great job making this a wonderful, lovely place to live, to raise my child, and then this event is one of the events we go to every year. We have a great time. I think it's amazing that you're going to sponsor it, I hope, and I just wanted to come out, really voice my support for this and similar measures. It's, it's a wonderful thing about the city, and so I thank you all for what you do to help with events like this that are family-friendly, fun, accepting of others, people different from ourselves, helps foster a connection between all of our different groups, and I think that's magic. Thank you so much for your time. I appreciate it.
Next is Alex Kajeros.
Good evening, city council. I have attended Glendale Pride in the Park multiple years in a row, and it could not be a more wholesome, welcoming, family-friendly event, as you've heard tonight. It's this one day a year, for those of us who are part of the LGBT community here in Glendale, to get to come together for just an afternoon picnic with friends and our families and feel a little less alone in a city that always, doesn't always make us feel welcome. I especially feel that when I look at the online discourse right now about LGBT issues in Glendale. I see a lot of fear and paranoia about some kind of shadowy conspiracy to convert or recruit children into being gay or trans, as if that's how human sexuality works. I can tell you from my lived experience, it is not. I grew up in Chandler, Arizona in the 90s. I did not know a single openly gay person, like nobody recruited me to be attracted to the same sex. I was surrounded by a culture in which gay people did not exist, and yet by the time that I was 11 or 12, I knew without a doubt that I was gay, just as clearly as my friends in middle school knew they were straight. Being gay is simply what I am, and nothing I could do or tell myself at, at age 12 could change that, and I don't, I don't know what it feels like to be that age and realize you're trans. I imagine it's a similar experience, but 100 times more terrifying because of the culture we live in. So in my experience, after pouring all these years of energy into hiding this big secret about myself, I finally came out to some close friends and family, and their acceptance and unconditional love allowed me to accept and love myself and set me on a path to live a full, productive, meaningful life. I would hope this is what we want for every person in our community. If the City of Glendale sponsors a pride event, in this case, Pride in the Park, it sends a clear message to anyone in our city who is still in the closet and terrified, just like I was, that the City of Glendale welcomes and accepts you. You are not alone, and you do not have to be afraid. So given all that, I really, really hope you support Glendale's Pride in the Park. Thank you.
Next is Alec Bartrosov.
Good evening. I also wanted to express my support for the event and for the city's sponsorship. I am a gay Armenian that grew up in Glendale. I've been here my whole life, and for those of you who have also spent many years here in Glendale, perhaps are also Armenian, you know more than anybody else, that this is an event that we need here in our community. There are many people in the community that feel like they are ostracized, that they're alienated, that they don't feel like they're welcome, and this isn't about, you can just scroll through. I wanted to share some photos of past Pride in the Park imagery, just so you know that this is a normal event. Everybody's welcome, maybe except for one person here who's accusing us of doing things that are absolutely not true, to see for yourself what this event is like and what it does for people and how happy people are at this event. So I want you to see it for yourself. This has happened a couple times. I think that's the fourth one this year. The money that the group is asking for would go towards things like food, arts and crafts, music. There's no shady things going on. There's no profit to Glendale Out or to Glendale Arts. All of this is going into a community, a community that we need to support, that we need to embrace, and I heard comments earlier this evening about bringing community together so that we can all stand together. Where is that? I'd like to see that here at the city and here on the dais. Please prove me right. Thank you.
Who's not invited, Mr. Bartrosov? Okay, so the whole city is not invited, I guess, by your comments. Next speaker.
Next is Valerie, who's on, on the phone line. Valerie, you're on air. You have three minutes.
Hi, please excuse my not being there in person, but after considerable online harassment after the school board riots two years ago, I don't feel comfortable speaking there. I was both surprised and incredulous hearing the mayor basically accuse Glendale Out of extremism last week. I'm perplexed with so opaque when we're on Facebook and Instagram and have a webpage. Having checked with the group, no identifiable inquiries from Glendale City personnel were made, so I assume the mayor intended to accuse us of extremism regardless. As a member of Glendale Out who attends meetings, our monthly coffee meetups, and who helps plan events, I both genuinely have no idea who runs the Glendale Extremist webpage, and I'm outraged that the whole group should be punished due to pure speculation. Since the mayor willingly missed our social media, I'll shed light on the dastardly things Glendale Out does. We hold monthly public coffee meetups. We plan an annual pride picnic, which, despite Scorchy Shelton's desperate hopes for a smorgasbord of depravity, is a family-friendly event open to all, including our straight allies. Last year, the park was full of families. There was no violence, no alcohol, and certainly none of the nudity our detractors had promised. Senator Porticino attended, if you'd like to question him on our nefarious motives. For the Trevor Foundation in 2023, LGBTQ+ youth who live in a community that is accepting of LGBTQ+ people reported significantly lower rates of suicide attempts than youth in hateful communities. Glendale Out is deeply worried about queer youth in general, but in particular in a city that permits homophobic riots rather than stands strong for their queer residents. If the city can't officially send out a firm, clear message of support, then it's up to the community to make up for this, and Glendale Out steps up where the city has failed to act in any appreciable manner. We offer a $1,000 scholarship to GUSD students annually. We've sent care packages to six GUSD schools' Gender and Sexuality Alliance clubs via the clubs sponsoring teachers, full of handwritten notes of encouragement, pride swag, and treats. Last September, we partnered with a variety of local orgs to put together the Glendale Queer Glam Slam, where we had a huge collection of clothes, accessories, shoes, makeup, et cetera, for all genders and sizes to allow queer kids to style themselves as they wanted, entirely free of cost to them. I wish you'd been there to see the delight on these teens' faces, and we would have welcomed council members had you shown any interest. Glendale Out members feel invested in our community, even if Glendale doesn't appear invested in us. In a country where queer rights are under heavy attack and bigoted rhetoric is ever escalating, we are asking our city to demonstrate more commitment than empty proclamations and blatantly insincere apologies. We are asking you to show the residents of Glendale that the city council cares about queer people too, that we have value, that we are welcome in Glendale, and that we aren't on our own in creating community and connection. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next caller is Angela. Angela, you're on air. You have three minutes.
Thank you, and thanks for taking my comment. I'm a Glendale parent, and it means so much to me to know that there are groups in the city creating opportunities for inclusive, family-friendly gatherings. I attended the Glendale Out Pride Picnic last year, and it was a fun and really special time to connect with friends, to make new ones, and to talk with leaders in our community, including Councilwoman Kazakian, about how frightened many of us were in the midst of, at that point, years of attacks of our LGBTQ community, allied parents and families, anyone who dares to speak out on behalf of LGBTQ people. And I'd assumed that that event with food, activities, entertainment was at least in part sponsored by the city, that our city would value the inclusion of people who want to offer opportunities like this. When I learned it was entirely volunteer-sponsored, as are all the activities, events, and the scholarships Glendale Out puts on and provides, I was impressed and also saddened that the city does not appear to support or promote what I believe was the only family-focused pride event in the city for the entire month of June. I hope that this year marks a change and that we will vote, we will support the funding of this event. It is of value to all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Our final speaker is Leah. Leah, you're on air. You have three minutes.
Hi, I live in Glendale. I've lived here for almost 15 years. I have students in GUSD public schools, and I also went to the Pride in the Park Picnic last year. Chocer, my entire family is still straight. However, we did have fun. We had good tacos. We listened to good music, and we spent time in Adams Hill, which we don't usually do. So I think that the city sponsors a wide range of cultural activities with your $325 million annual budget. So I think if you can sponsor music in the park, movie nights in the park, chess tournaments, you can certainly find $5,000 to have a family-friendly picnic during Pride to show our LGBTQ members of our community in Glendale that they are cared for, they are loved, they are seen, and they are celebrated. This is no different than any of the other cultural community events that are part of our city budget. A budget is a statement of values, and if you don't find $5,000 for this, well, you're telling us what you do and what you don't value in the City of Glendale, and that's a shame. So I hope you do the right thing so that we don't have to have all of this nonsense back and forth anymore. Let's have a picnic in the park. You can all come, even you, Mayor Nigarian. I think you might have a good time. Thank you.
Thank you, and that is all.
Thank you. Comments by colleagues?
I don't know. Did Mr. Gruppin want to go first, or I? So when I saw this item on the agenda, and I wasn't going to be here, there was some concerns, not because of some of the issues that I hear were raised, and full disclosure, I haven't yet fully watched the city council meetings, and because I started with the budget meeting, so I'm playing catch-up. But since this item is before us, and as it was listed with Glendale Out, my first question was whether Glendale Out was a nonprofit, and that question was answered. So it's not because of anything that Glendale Out does or is engaged in that I had this concern. I just feel that it sets the wrong precedent if a entity that is not legally recognized, that is not necessarily accountable for how it disperses its funds, is receiving funds directly from the city. So on the other hand, Glendale Arts is a legitimate organization that files the appropriate paperwork and accounts for how it spends its funds. It was the entity that was tasked with the running of the Alex Theater for many years and has been through the process, still has the same staff as it did before, and has organized art exhibits in the month of Pride and other events, and I think would be the more appropriate vehicle to receive any type of funds from the city. And let me just simply say, this has nothing to do with my views on these issues. I can tell you that personally, as a council member, I believe that every law-abiding member of this community has value and importance. Members of the LGBT community are citizens and, or residents of this city and should be made to feel that they are a part of the city as much as any person. There may be some people who feel differently about that, and certainly I can't control or tell anyone how to think, but my hope would be that through events such as this, through age-appropriate, through well-organized community events, members of our community, regardless of where they come from, who they love, how they may feel about each other, will have opportunities to interact with one another, ask questions, and perhaps make new friends that they didn't think that they would be friends with before. I commend you, Ms. Brooks. I know you got very emotional up here. It takes a very big person to acknowledge when they perhaps misspoke and did not intend for their words to be used in a certain way to make someone feel like less of a member of this community, so hats off to you. This is one of those events. I have been to it. I think it's a fine event, and I don't have any objection to it. I would support the allocation of a very small amount. $5,000 is not much. I understand that if you ask 10 people how $5,000 should be spent in this city, you'll probably receive five, 10 different, maybe you'll receive more than 10 opinions. You'll receive 15 opinions, but certainly people can sit here and criticize and say how the money can, should be spent. Many of them probably will have valid suggestions, as Ms. Brooks does when she comes up here, and I apologize for continuously invoking your name, but I know that you are a firebrand for livable rents or affordable rents in this for livable rents or affordable rents in this city, and I'm sure that would be your top priority. Someone else may have a different priority. But for enough members of our community, I think this event is an important one for families, for individuals, for people who want to understand more about the experience of individuals in our community who may have not always felt welcomed, and so I think it's not inappropriate. I will also say, I mean, look, it's not, I've been accused of many things. In fact, I remember when at least three of us on this dais were accused of not being pro-LGBT. There was, in fact, an ad taken out by, I don't know, was it Glendale Out that took out that? I don't want to misspeak if it wasn't, but there was an ad taken out in the Glendale News Press saying that we weren't doing enough, we weren't speaking out enough. And I'll tell you, I don't like the pageantry of activism or performance, you know, of politics. I think one person suggested that I only go to events to be photographed. I am not a person that's very eager to be photographed. I'm not always jumping in front of the camera. But I do think that people are important enough in this community to be valued, to have events for them, and with that, I would support the allocation of funds to Glendale Arts to organize an age-appropriate, family-friendly Pride event, as they always, as has always taken place in Adams Mini Park. I would also like, I mean, I would like to know what the full cost of that event is. I think we're just throwing out figures. It could be less than $5,000, could be just over, so I think through Glendale Arts, we could possibly get an actual figure to that as well. And welcome anyone who wants to additionally support it financially to do so, as has been suggested.
Mr. Garpetian, do you have any comments?
Yeah, I also watched the meeting last week, and I have a question from our city attorney on the process, not related to this issue or to this item, the dollar amount or what have you. When we want to continue an item, we come up in the beginning and continue the item. Last week was kind of puzzling for me and confusing a little bit because the item was discussed, it took public comments, and then Councilmember Broadman mentioned that he is in favor of it. Councilmember Osakian mentioned he's in favor of it. Then Mayor Najarian spoke and said he has maybe doubts that he may not be in favor of it. And then, because there were no votes to, if there were not three votes, the item would have died, and then Councilmember Broadman mentioned, I want to continue this item for next week. I think if we want to continue an item, we need to continue it from the beginning, not to have all the discussions and take public comments and everything, and then they say, oh, I don't have the votes, any item, not only related to this item. Then we'll say we continue for next week. I think if you see there are only three of us, and one of them may not vote for it, let's do it from the beginning, because it doesn't, it doesn't look right when you sit out there and look in and see. People do not know how the process is, and I don't, that's a question for the city attorney as to what is the process? Why are we taking testimony from public and discussing here? And then, if I don't have the votes and I continue the item? Again, it's not about this item. I don't want to, don't get me wrong, it has nothing to do with the item before us. But that's a question. Then I'll make one.
Councilmember Garpetian, so there's no procedural limitation on when a member can make a motion to continue an item. So that occurred after some discussion and recognition that it was gonna not have the three affirmative votes. Yes, that happened, but there's no, there was no limitation on that occurring, and, you know, it could have occurred at the beginning of the item, but there was no limitation on that. And I would note, normally, you know, if, for example, if it had been a full council that night, presumably the same three who, or, you know, same majority who wanted to continue an item would maybe ostensibly be the same majority that were gonna vote one way or the other on the item. So usually, you don't see it happening a lot. It just did on that particular occasion, because a motion to continue only needs to take majority of the quorum, whereas we have a special rule for actually putting it on the agenda that it takes three affirmative votes. So again, nothing prohibited, there's no rule prohibiting what occurred for that item to be continued when it was.
So can I just, Councilmember Garpetian, I want to get further clarification on the point you raised, which I thought was an interesting and important one. May I?
Of course.
So is it because, Mr. Garcia, you're saying it needs three votes because of where it was agendized on the agenda?
Correct.
Otherwise, because I was a little puzzled as well, if three council members are the only ones present, which constitutes a quorum of the body, two out of three constitutes a majority of that quorum.
Correct. Under our rules, that's correct.
Were it not agendized under that new business clause, which has a stipulation for three?
Correct.
It would have passed.
Correct.
Okay. All right. I was wondering about that. Thank you, Mr. Garpetian.
I was wondering too, and I did have a conversation with the city attorney. Felt that there was some sort of procedural issues going on, but continue, Mr. Garpetian.
Yeah, and look, I think this is a very small amount, but we have a process in place. Any nonprofit who wants to use our parks, any nonprofit that wants to do events, they get a big discount. We decided because of, ever since this item was on the agenda from last week, I got like four or five calls. We have a group, we want a sponsorship. I want to, I have a soccer tournament, I want to do it in a park for two days, I want a sponsorship. I think this is why we came up with a process to have a set standard. Any nonprofit that wants to use any of our facilities, any of our parks, they get 50% discount. In some cases, if I'm not mistaken, 100% discount, which is, in some cases, is a lot more than $5,000. And as far as, you know, I, again, I watched the meeting last week, the extremist group or whatever, I don't know who they are, I don't know who's affiliated with who. I mean, I don't, I try to stay away from this, this kind of social media groups, and there was a photo was texted to me from that website that had me in a car running over kids with bicycles because I spoke against protected bicycle lanes in some of our streets. It's, but I never said anything because I believe in First Amendment. They had the right to voice their, you know, opinion that way. So I didn't come out and, you know, talk about it or put it on the website or what have you, or here, didn't display it, because again, they have the right to voice their opinion, even if it's against me. With that, I think we have a process in place, and if there is, if Glendale Arts is going to handle this event, that's fine. Let them file the application, and we give them the discounts that could be more than more than $5,000, or give them 100% discount on park rentals and everything else that we do. That's where I stand.
Let me, let me sort of encapsulate where we are on this issue. I heard Mr. Osakian's comments. It appeared that you were ready to give that money to Glendale Arts to put on this Pride festival.
Yes.
Which is different than what we perhaps saw in all those photos that came out where it's Glendale Out Pride Festival. Is that your intention, then, to ensure that that money is administered by Glendale Arts, and it's not just funneled through to an organization that you've cast doubts on, that I've cast doubts on?
Well, it's not a matter of casting doubts per se, and it's, again, not about a specific organization. I think the concern is in regard to, I wouldn't want the money to be a direct pass-through just simply for the sake of the technicality or circumventing that. I think Glendale Arts can invite whoever they want, certainly including members who are also members of Glendale Out. And then in terms of branding, I'm neither here nor there. I mean, if the event has been called Pride in the Park, it can continue to be called Pride in the Park. I mean, what's in a name after all? I think ultimately what matters is creating that safe space and event for members of the community. How it gets done, as long as it's done appropriately, as long as the organization we work with has a track record, is a nonprofit, is able to track the funds, that's what matters.
And you're referring to Glendale Arts in that?
Yes.
Okay, so this is, this is only as to whether we want to agendize the item. If this item goes forward, I do want to, in all transparency, I'm going to ask the individual who I'm quite certain who is behind Glendale Extremists to come to council, if necessary, place that person under oath, and determine whether he is connected to Glendale Extremists and to Glendale Out. Maybe. I'm just, that's a possibility out there. And get into a much more robust discussion about what I might think is a conflict of interest by giving money to a council member's relatives' organization. So 12A is up. It's been modified to the extent that the sponsorship of up to $5,000 for Glendale Arts' Pride event. Am I correct in stating that?
I took it, well, I took it, I heard it as maybe Glendale Out's Pride event, but that's being financially sponsored by Glendale Arts.
Yeah. Let me clarify.
Let's clarify that.
Glendale Arts is the fiscal sponsor. Glendale, Glendale Arts.
No, no, the fiscal sponsor is the city of Glendale.
No, it's called a fiscal sponsor. When you are the fiscal sponsor, you are a 501(c)(3), and you can be the fiscal sponsor to some other organization that does not have 501(c)(3) status.
I don't, is that?
That's a term. That is a legal term.
Sure. So have we done that before?
Gone through fiscal sponsors? I would be surprised if we didn't, but...
I'm seeing a lot of heads that are shaking.
But that's a very normal thing to do.
Perhaps, okay.
So Glendale Arts is the fiscal sponsor. Glendale Out is the organizer. Glendale Out will be incurring, either incurring expenses directly and getting reimbursed, or will organize, say, a food truck, or a photo booth, or a set of musicians who will then bill Glendale Arts. Glendale Arts will pay their bill, and that's how we get the transparency. I also said it's up to $5,000, so I want to clarify a question that was raised about the cost. The budget for the event is more than $5,000, but if the event costs less than $5,000, we will pay the amount that the event costs, because Glendale Arts will be billing us for, or will be telling us the amount that they end up spending.
Mayor, let me, let me just say, in fact, for today's meeting, as I was reading council meeting orders of business and rules of decorum and all the procedures, there was also, if I'm not mistaken, sections in there about how long these discussions can occur, and I think we far surpass that. Principally, I'm for agending that, agendizing this for a discussion, but Councilmember Broadman, I will tell you, this needs, needs a little bit more work than what you're just stating here as to how it's conducted. And I think it's in the best interest of the community, the LGBT community and everyone for it to be done appropriately. I would urge for Glendale Arts to take on a more active role, for Glendale Out to partner with Glendale Arts, if they, as being the only LGBTQ organization that we have in the city that's visible and out there, that has these coffees and meetings. But again, in terms of fiscal disbursement of funds, I think Glendale Arts needs to take a more active role in this as they have done in other events and functions. I'm going to leave it at that. I support the agendizing of this or for it to come back for that, and then we can figure it out then.
Can I?
Mayor, if I may, I was going to ask a point of clarification. So per, as Councilmember Osakian mentioned, and I think you mentioned too, the intent was to have a brief, short discussion, far surpassed that, to agendize this item, right? Agendize this item for the purpose of, I want to make sure that we know what to put in the report.
I think, I think that you would say allocation of $5,000 for a Pride in the Park event, and then have it open to Glendale Arts, or I would include Glendale Arts as
Right.
being the recipient of those funds.
Right.
And I would, and we can, when it comes back...
Is council going to have another round of discussions about?
Oh, yes. Yes, we are.
I think at this point, there would be.
There is. There's gonna be.
Until we can figure out how those funds would be used.
Well...
Okay. Let's go to Councilmember Asatirian, and then let's put it up for roll call.
Just part, as part of that, there should just be of how we're dispersing the funds and what verification we're getting for what was spent. Because I think my issue is now hearing like up to $5,000 about if it's going to be for that process, right? So just so everyone's clear, there's transparency, and, you know, we don't have folks coming back then and questioning, well, if the event was four, why did we give five? Just have that process figured out with Glendale Arts.
Okay. Shall we take a roll call on whether we're going to agendize this as reiterated by...
I think it needs to be moved and seconded, but yes.
I'll, I'll move the item.
I'll second.
Roll call?
Councilmember Asatirian?
Yes.
Broadman?
Yes.
Carpetian?
It's too confusing for me as to who's doing what, I abstain.
Kasakian?
Just for agendizing.
Yes.
And Mayor Najarian?
No.
Next item, please. Mr. Kasakian, is this a good time to excuse you, or would you like to stick around?
I'll try to stick around for as long as I possibly can. I didn't think that would take as long as it did.
Mayor, would you like me to read item 8A?
8A, please.
Item 8A, city attorney regarding adoption of rules pertaining to council meetings, procedures, and decorum. Introduction of ordinance, amendment, Glendale Municipal Code 1995, section 2.04.080, 2.04.090, 2.04.120, and 2.04.140, and deleting section 2.04.150. To resolution adopting the rules of order, procedures, and decorum for the conduct of the city council meetings. Mayor, I do believe I have about eight, nine cards.
Okay, let's go to Mr. Golania.
I'm going to refer to the city attorney.
I can get that slide deck up. I'll try to get through this quickly. Mayor and council. So next slide, please. I don't, sorry, I don't have the clicker, if you want to bring it. So in the January, in the January meeting, the council had a discussion about our order of business for council meetings, and specifically discussion regarding public comment periods, and then rules of decorum. So the, what we've prepared for you is a ordinance, which will make some modifications to the municipal code, as well as a resolution, which would put these new rules pertaining to order, procedure, and decorum in one set of, one set of rules. So with respect to public comment, there will be, the direction we received, and this is what's in the resolution, is a community event announcement period, which would be three minutes per speaker. There's no aggregate limit on that. The council's discussion at the time was that given the amount of actual community event cards that we receive, you didn't anticipate there'd be a number of cards, so it'd be fine to leave it at no limitation. Then there would be a first period of oral communications, that's what I, that's what we're calling it, which would be combining a period for which speakers could speak on either agenda items or non-agenda items, and so obviously, this would occur before action items. And then there would be an opportunity for speakers to speak up to three minutes per speaker with a 30-minute aggregate speaking time for this period of time, and that three minute per speaker could be reduced if there are a large number of cards. For example, the mayor would have the discretion to reduce that time. And then there'd be limitations to the speaking period, so if a member of the public speaks during this first period of oral communication on an agenda item, then they would not be able to speak on that agenda item when it was called. Similarly, if they spoke on non-agenda items during this first period of oral communication, then they would, during that second period of oral communication, they would not be able to speak during that period, because they would have already had that opportunity to do so at the first, the first period. The second period of oral communications would be just identical to what we call oral communications now. It's the item at the end of the agenda, but the direction that the council gave was to reduce that period from five minutes to three minutes. I would also note that the rules incorporate the recent practices related to the submitted speaker card, so that members of the public speaking on just the general public comments like community events or first period, second period, would have to submit their cards or call in before the item is called, or submit cards on agenda items. or call in before the item is called, or submit cards on agenda items prior to the completion of the staff report, and then either those requirements could be waivable by, or extended by the presiding officer. And then, just another note that I would note, that the, the rules call for, allow the mayor or any city council member to call, ask for, call a point of order if any member of the public is speaking on a matter that's not germane to the topic, or not germane to oral communications. Next slide, please. So another area of discussion at the January meeting was rules pertaining to the council's debate and deliberation on, on matters. So the first rule would be a rule that during their speaking time, each council member would be able to speak without interruption from another council member. One exception, obviously, being a point of order that's raised by a fellow council member. And so if, if the, the council member is raising a point of order such as it's not germane to the topic, it's a personal attack, those sites, those sorts of things, and that the presiding officer will have to rule on that point of order before the speaker will be allowed to proceed. And of course, those decisions of the presiding officer are appealable to the entire council. Then the, the, the second rule that the council directed us to implement, or to put into these, into these rules, is a, would be a rule requiring, or allowing every speaker, every council speaker, so every member of the council, the opportunity to speak once before another council member had, had, had an opportunity to speak a second time. So to limit the back and forth, but allow every council member this opportunity. The first round of comments would be limited to five minutes. The second round of comments, and there, any comments thereafter, would be three minutes. One exception to this would be, obviously, or one, I wouldn't say, the applicability of this rule doesn't apply to council member questions, so council member has questions for their, for staff, or, thank you, or members of the, the public, raise a question, or even one of their colleagues, that wouldn't, that wouldn't count towards their speaking time. And then the speaking limits would be waivable or extendable by the mayor. And the discussion, just so from what I recall hearing, was that, that request to have extended time should be made prior to the commencement of council deliberations, so not during the middle of, of speaking, but at the beginning, say, Mr. Mayor, Madam Mayor, that the time, we know this is going to be a lengthy conversation, can each of us have 10 minutes to speak, or five minutes to speak? And that decision happen earlier than during the middle of the deliberation. There'd be no limit on the rounds, so every council member would have a chance to continue to speak until such time as, you know, that, that, those rounds have, have completed, unless, obviously, a, a member of the council calls a question, and there's a vote on that, that particular issue. This next topic on the discussion was the, what we just went through in the last item is council member future agenda request, so this is when a council member makes a request to agendize something, agendize a report. So that first request is made at a council meeting, and then it's brought back to the subsequent meeting for discussion. The direction we had to incorporate into these rules was for the council member making the request to have two minutes to make his or her pitch as for why a report should be prepared and brought back to council. Then the council, the rest of the council members have opportunity to question. The, the presenter asks for questions for clarification, but there wouldn't be debate or deliberation on whether to agendize that, or go to a vote. Of course, it's subject to comments from the public on that item, and certainly, the council would be within its purview to reduce the amount of speaking time on this particular agenda item, given that it's really intended to be a short, a component of the meeting. One exception that we, we wrote, we were recommending is, because this happened a couple of times, where the council is being asked by one of the, one of the colleague, one of your colleagues, to write a letter of support or opposition to something that, at the international, federal, state, or local level, an opposition to some action that's being taken internationally and sort of thing. So rather than have a report, have to come back, just allow this opportunity for the, the council to direct staff to take that action, rather than have to bring back a subsequent report. Lengthy discussion last time on rules of decorum, so I won't necessarily go into all of it, but again, the rules would incorporate rules of decorum, which have, we've been implemented by practice, and this would formalize them into one single resolution. Currently, some exist in the municipal code, others list, others exist in other, other documents, but, such as our code of conduct, but this would apply as a resolution that's applicable to the, both to the public and to the council. But, you know, things like, the, the members of the public have to address the council from the podium, from the microphone, direct the comments to the council, and not to individual members of the council, or staff, or, or to the public. Members of the public will have to cease speaking when their, when their time is up. And then, obviously, public comments have to pertain to the item to which they're speaking, or to the council's subject matter jurisdiction. And then there's a whole host of rules regarding disruptive behavior, such as shouting, or screaming, or, you know, hissing, or booing, those sorts of things, that would be incorporated into the rules. I have those, those rules in more detail, if council would like to have a discussion about them. There were some other meeting issues that were discussed in January. One is incorporating 11:00 PM cutoff time for regular council meetings. There would be obvious exceptions for that, there'd be a completion of the compending item, so if 11:00 PM hits, the council would complete that item, and then consult with the city manager as to whether the, the remaining items could be continued to a subsequent meeting, or whether the council should continue those items, but ultimately, the council would have to make a motion to extend the meeting. And then regardless of what time it is, at 11:00 PM, the council will still be obligated to complete that second period of oral communications, as well as, as new business. There's a discussion about removing items from the agenda. The consensus was that they would, if an item was posted on the agenda, it wouldn't be removed until it's brought to council, and then either the city manager or, or council member would ask for it to be moved. If there's no objection, it would be removed and brought, brought back to a subsequent meeting, or if, if it, the necessity was no longer there, it would need to be brought back. But that's, that's the idea, rather than items being removed after they're published and questions being raised. Another, another topic, I know near and dear to Mr. Taktanis Harvey, is removal of agenda preview. So that'll, that's incorporated, that was consensus on that one. There's some discussion in the rules regarding reconsideration and rescission, and the idea here is just to make them essentially one and the same, under Robert's rules, or technically treated differently. Consideration is consideration of an item at the same meeting, and requires somebody from the prevailing side to vote, to change their mind, whereas rescission is rescinding an action taken. Sometimes there's confusion, because maybe there was no action, actually, there was not actually an action taken, and the question is, how does that, how does the council reconsider that when somebody on the prevailing side wishes to reconsider? So this essentially will streamline that rule. Essentially, the rule will be, if a council member who's in the prevailing side wants to reconsider an item, they can make that request at any subsequent meeting. And then the rules will state that where these particular rules are silent, then Robert's rules of order will continue to prevail over any procedural questions. There were a couple of items, open issues from the last time, that we didn't get direction, or we were asked to bring back some options. One, on the seating of time, sometimes the speaker requests to cede his or her time to another public speaker, and there's no hard and fast rule currently, and there was some discussion about perhaps it'd be allowed, but in that case, there'd be limitations on it, such as both the speaker seating the time, and the speaker receiving the time, both be in chambers, and then maybe a limitation on how many speakers could cede their time, so one speaker, two speakers. So if that's something the council desires to put in the rules, we, we'd like some direction on that. There was a discussion at the last meeting about the, the rotation of the voting order, you know, currently, the vote is taken in alphabetical order each and every time, discussion about rotating that to make a little bit more, a little bit more fair, or, so that the same council member's not having to vote first every time. So what, you can either do it sort of on a random selection basis, or what we've had before, which is each item rotates one name alphabetically after, after another, so the first agenda item on the agenda, Councilmember Sotia would be the first to vote, the next item would, Councilmember Brotman would be the first to vote, that at least rotates it a little bit. That would be our recommendation, it's a little bit easier to implement, but certainly willing to take council direction on that. There was discussion on wide camera angle use, there was a, there was direction given on that, on a three to two vote. The mayor asked, as the presiding officer, for consideration, acknowledging that he was not on the prevailing side and that, but it's there, if any of the council members want to have a discussion about that for, for this evening. And then last, the next steps are, we're asking you to introduce the ordinance tonight, we'll bring back whatever change, that ordinance, as well as any changes you have on the rules of order, procedure, and decorum, that's part of the resolution at 8A2, bring that back for you at the next meeting for final, finalization. So if, if both of those things are adopted at next week's meeting, then they will be effective on June 19th. So that's, that's it, that's all I have, so unless council members have questions, have to answer questions, or take, take questions after you hear from public comment.
All right. Mr. Kasakian, would you, how's your time? Would you like to go first?
I'm, my, my car is about to turn into a pumpkin. I, I, I will have to leave, but I'm going to step away from the dais to make a call, see if I can stay at least for some of the public comments. Unfortunately, I don't know if I'll be able to make it to deliberation based on the number of speakers we have.
Okay. Procedurally, Mr. Garcia, what, what do you prefer, just going through each one of these slides and telling us, telling you where we stand on them?
Sure, I mean, I would note that, except for this slide, slide seven, I mean, they're, they're baked into the rules, so if you haven't, if you disagree with anything that's in there, then let's have that, otherwise, you don't need to, because it's already, it was written pursuant to the direction you had previously given. But the, I mean, this is the one where we need a little bit more direction and feedback.
Okay, let's go to the speakers, and then council will discuss.
Our, our first speaker is Alan Durham. You have three minutes.
Mayor Najarian, members of the council. I'm Alan Durham. Please, I have comments on a couple of specific items that are being proposed. Please don't eliminate the agenda preview from council meetings, unless, because for years, you can go to the website, it says future agendas, you click on it, it lists the agenda for the prior meeting. It's never updated correctly. It's never updated accurately. So I rely on our assistant city manager to give the agenda preview, unless the city is really going to be diligent in updating the website every week. On future agenda requests, you know, it looks ridiculous to me, that's really the current procedure that was agreed upon. When there's an agenda request, the council member proposing that agenda item is supposed to make a very brief statement of what the agenda item is, with very brief follow-up questions for the other council members if they don't understand that item. There's not supposed to be extensive discussion. How long did we listen to the, Mr. Brotman's agenda item between last week and this week? It had to be a 20-minute discussion. It's just to put it on the agenda, the discussion should be once it's on the agenda. So if you're not going to follow the procedure, why adopt it? You're not following it now. And you should show public speakers, like myself, their faces on camera. There's huge criticism out in the community for showing the backs of your constituents instead of their faces. You know, communication isn't just related to voice. Facial expressions, body language speaks as well. It seems disrespectful. You show your staff's faces, you show your consultants' faces, you know, you show receivers of proclamation, but, you know, if you get up to, to make comments on municipal issues, all people see is the back of your head. And please don't enact any of these procedures if you really don't actually intend to follow them. Thank you.
Next is Alan Dish. Following Alan Dish is Patrick Murphy and Mike Mulholland.
Honorable Mayor and Council, good evening. I'm Alan Dish. I'm following Mr. Durham, and I am in favor of keeping, as much as we can, oral communication intact. My fear is, of course, generally, democracy is in a crisis, or whatever, here in the council, I am afraid, you know, when, from both sides, we hear these, these words, council members being called like dictators, I'm afraid that this is a dangerous sign, when, again, from both sides, these radical terms are being designated. People say democracy, it means diverse voices can be heard. I claim yes and no, because diverse, sorry, democracy also means that we agree on many basic rules of how elections happen and so on. For example, although I agree that Al Gore probably won the elections, but when the elections happened between George Bush and the younger, and Al Gore, after a couple hundred votes, when it was decided in Florida that Bush won, everyone agreed, this no longer is functioning. So that's my pessimism, that here, I, I would say, don't just, don't just blame the right-wingers, because nonetheless, Trump and so on, populism is a reaction to the limitations, let's call it, of this benevolent, liberal, American consensus, which lasted some 15, 20 years. So I am just listing these things. Of course, I have so many problems, especially with the three-minute oral communication. I hear, I remain a faithful Glendalean, you know, Miss, the late Margaret Hammond, the late Vacha Mangasarian, who were critics of the council at the time, insisted on five minutes. I can barely get a concept in three minutes, you know, and five is, I think, I think a little better, but at the same time, I'm so sad that public space, even if it is public, is more and more disintegrated, fragmented, so yes, we need some state regulations, if I may put it that way. And, I mean, Mr. Durham is also right about this idea of the camera, you know. I claim, although I was for the masks during COVID, but like, I'm not saying, oh, we, we need faces, that without a face, in, in some cases, the, just hearing the voice sometimes is even more kind of ominous, but like, when you see a face, it adds a human touch, and so on. That's all I would say. Oh, thank you, sorry.
Next is Patrick Murphy.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. I am not going to repeat what Alan and Alan just said about the, the camera. However, I believe that it is a form of suppression of speech. I would ask that a split screen be used. I think a couple of council members in the last conversation that was going on suggested that. I think that's a good idea. Mr. Durham is right, facial expression, body language means a lot. So your constituents need to be seen. They put you up there. It shouldn't be just for proclamation recipients, staff, consultants. So I just would say that people wish to be heard and seen, so let's do the split screen. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Mike Mulholland. Following Mike is Jackie Gish and Beth Brooks. Okay. Next is Jackie Gish.
Very unusual for me to try to talk on three items. First of all, thank you for the opportunity to talk today. As you know, I attend or watch a lot of city council meetings. One suggested change that I did not see in the report is to limit either the number of times a member of the public can address council during a given meeting, or the total number of minutes a member of the public can use to address council during a given meeting. At a recent city council meeting, there were several people in the, from the public that spoke maybe four, or five, or six times during one meeting, for a total minutes of 10, 20, 30 minutes. Listening to these same people, meeting after meeting, for topic after topic, often with redundant remarks from meeting to meeting, takes away from valuable city council time, and may prevent council from addressing items late in the agenda. This is clearly not in the best interests of the public. It appears that both LA City and Santa Monica do apply some limits per person for a meeting, and this was in the January 28th city council meeting exhibit. I also wish that something could be done about the incivility of some of the public speakers. Verbally attacking city council members or staff members or staff with crude remarks, which I don't want to repeat here, but certainly words and phrases that we would want, want our children to hear or repeat. Sometimes those remarks have led to people sending threatening emails to council members or staff and are putting threats on the Facebook pages of organizations or individuals or on Nextdoor. I want to live in a Glendale where people can disagree and still be civil. I hope you all do too.
Thank you. And next is Beth Brooks. Following Beth Brooks is Ramela Iraghi.
I'm going to make Jackie mad now by talking more than once, maybe four times. Too bad. I wanted to hope that you could put a Zoom meeting on because sometimes calling is kind of a mess if you don't call right, at the right time and there's a lag. If you had this meeting on Zoom, I think that would also increase participation because sometimes people don't want to leave their TV on for hours, you know, and just watch this. They want to watch something else on TV. At least, at least if it's on Zoom, it's on their phone or it's on a computer. So I think that would be important. I don't know how you're going to control going off topic with, you know, when a speech is extemporaneous. You know, if somebody's talking, you make sort of mental connections that may not, an analogy or a comparison that doesn't really fit the subject matter for that moment. Would you stop the clock? Would you give the time back? I mean, I don't know how you would police that. I understand when people are just going off on something that's totally, has nothing to do with anything, you know. I understand that. But otherwise, I don't know how you, how you would police that, actually, to stop people from speaking off subject matter, on subject matter. I just don't know how that would work. And also, just related to this and this, why are public comments being asked for now before you finish the discussion? Because I know when you discuss things, you know, sometimes all of a sudden I'll hear something and go, oh, yeah, that, that, now I need to talk about this. But now I'm talking, I'm speaking to you, but you may say something and I'll sit in the back and go, oh, jeez, I should have, you know, I really want to address that and I won't be able to. So I don't know if that's canonized anywhere or that's discretionary, but I would hope that you would put public comments after you speak and then obviously then you vote or have more discussion because this way I don't know what you're, you're all going to say. So that's it. And I'm sorry if I piss you off, Jackie.
Next is Ramela Iraghi.
Yeah, there's a lot to, a lot to ask from this chamber that, yeah, be democratic. So, yeah, this is a dictatorship going on in this chamber. You're, yeah, limiting us from not talking to the mayor, not talking to the council, not talking to the staff, not talking to the public. My main reason that I'm here, I want to talk to the public. I've noticed that, noticed that last session, that after hours, I waited here and came talk to the, to the council, Dan and Ellen left the chamber. Yeah, I mean, yeah, that's how, how public has been treated here. As I say, the reason that I'm coming to is talking to the public. I don't give a damn if Dan and Ellen doesn't want to listen to me and they want to leave the chamber. And same as other, other members of the, of this chamber, council members, if they want to leave. The main reason that I'm here is the public. I need public to listen to me. Yeah, and I want to, and I want to talk to the public. Yeah. Last, last Wednesday, last Tuesday, I was at the Burbank Council and there was like 15 speaker cards at the beginning of the council meeting. And all the council members sat there and listened to, to all those 15, 15 speakers, including Mayor, Ms. Mayor, Ms. Mayor of the Burbank, who was very pregnant, sat there and listened to the public. And they never left the, the chamber. Yeah, I think this was like disrespect to the member of the public when you're leaving the chamber and you're not listening to. Yeah, so basically, I was going to, there's, there's a lot of stuff going on in this that I don't agree. I want to talk to the public. I want to see, public see my face. Yeah, Burbank Council let, let the camera faces to the speaker. So, yeah, there's a lot, well, yeah, I don't, I don't want to be limited by your rules and regulations in this council. And, yeah. And, yeah, there's another apartment building that are being evicted by, because of, I don't know.
Thank you for speaking. Anyone else?
That is all.
That is all.
Mr. Mayor.
I'm going to recognize you or excuse you. What shall I do?
I have to excuse myself. I called. I extended my stay here on the council by 15 minutes, but I do now have to leave and I apologize for that. Thank you.
Harding thoughts? Three minutes seating time?
There's a lot to unpack here and there's certainly some good suggestions, some so-so suggestions, some suggestions that I don't necessarily think are necessary. I think some valid points were also made by the public. But I'll say that ultimately, we are trying to control some things that I feel are perhaps uncontrollable, particularly ways of expressing each other's thoughts, whether it's from the council side or from the podium. I think, and I believe that most of the time, our meetings are run well, people participate civilly, but there's been a deterioration of that, not just here in these chambers on a few occasions, but across the country. We're seeing it, it's prevalent everywhere. One of the suggestions I have is to bring back the Civic Institute that I had asked for when I was mayor, where we had cohorts, we only had one cohort, where people were able to learn about how the city is run, how to participate, how government works, why it sometimes doesn't work, how to make it work the way you want it to, when you have issues that are important to you. And through that, to help people understand how to engage with government, what the rules of engagement are, so to speak. I think that's a, that's a fine place to start. I think some good things came out of that, one of which is we have one of the alumni of the first cohort who comes here regularly and participates and credits that program for that. I think oftentimes what we see is people see something perhaps online, on social media, or someone else doing it, and they say, okay, well, you know, because I'm frustrated, I'm going to give in to those impulses to speak in a certain way, be disruptive, whatever it may be. I don't want to put it entirely on the public because certainly we as council members up here can also do better, be more attentive. I wish more people would be, take a page out of the book of individuals like Mr. Murphy, who, you know, sometimes we may not agree politically on, ideologically on an issue, but he is very respectful and he's always been respectful every time he comes up here because I think he understands the importance of this institution and the city hall and what it represents. Not everyone, unfortunately, follows that example. I think people, again, sometimes can be, unfortunately, a little rude. I don't know, again, how we control that. But I will leave my other thoughts for another time. I don't know what more. There's so much here that we would have to be here another hour, 45 minutes to an hour at least, with all of us expressing our opinions to say what we feel on each item. So that's it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kasakian.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes.
I would actually recommend that we continue this item as well. I mean, we're talking about how the council runs and I would like to have a full council.
Okay. Well, this is just for giving some direction and introducing an ordinance, at which time we can have a full discussion.
One option is to introduce the ordinance and then come back and have a discussion about the next week, because this was going to be on the agenda for next week. Have that, have the discussion about the resolution, which is the substance of the rules. So we can have a discussion next week and, and if council's ready to adopt them, then they can do so, or we can bring them back at a later time.
Well, what I'd like to do, since we're here, since you gave your report, since we're going to be discussing it at another time, and I know we're getting maybe a little tired. Are you getting tired or is it just me?
I'm not getting tired.
Oh, I'm getting, then it's just me. Just to, you know, go through it, and maybe we do have consensus on many of these and we can highlight then the ones that we're going to be teeing up for further discussion next week.
Sure. I mean, I would, again, just wanted to note this, these are based, the, everything except for Slide 7 were kind of the things that the council had already at least had some consensus on and given its direction. But like Zed, if council has a change of mind at this point, we want.
We're still good with it. Let's, you know, let's, well, let me just start then. Let me just start and sort of give you an idea. I'm on page two here. The community event announcements, yes, three minutes are fine. First period is fine. I don't want to limit those speakers too much. So 30 minutes would be 10 speakers for the 30, for the three-minute pop. I think that's good. Right now, we're at 15, basically, five speakers. So I'm okay with that. Second period of oral communications, I, I don't know, I think five minutes is a, is good. It only hurts when we've had really long meetings and there's a lot of oral communications at that point. Counsel debate and deliberation, I do want to give everybody, well, forget what I want to do, but I think everyone should have a, a chance to address the issue before we go back and call on someone else. Generally, I think the mayors have been sensitive to that and not called too many times on someone before another has been recognized. Of course, the mayor, I think, is, is fine if he can waive that or think that there needs to be an extension on a particular productive discussion. You know, no number of round limits unless someone calls the question. I'm okay with that. Yeah, the future agenda request, it's so tempting, like we did today just to get into it. And that's probably wrong. We probably shouldn't have done that. We should stick to a very short and abbreviated presentation of what the question is proposed to be up for the agenda. So I'm okay with the, the two-minute. Letters of support and opposition, I'm okay with that. Rules of decorum, of course, address from the podium, the comments should be made to council. We do generally cut people off when the time ends. We try to keep them focused on the agenda items. That's something we already do. Disruptive behavior, I think, is addressed in Robert's Rules of Orders in terms of warnings, and we've done that before. We've, Mayor Osoturian had a couple of meetings like that where things were a little rowdy. Cut-off time, I think that's a good rule because I start to get tired after a long day and I'm probably not working at full, full capacity. So maybe that's something we can discuss more fully. Removal of the agenda item, I think that should only be done with a consensus of council. Agenda preview, I kind of like our assistant city manager doing the, the preview. I mean, if nothing else, I know next week we've got a hell of a meeting, even though I wasn't listening to exactly every single item. So I just have that in the back of my mind. And it doesn't take that long. It's about three, four minutes. The reconsider and rescission, that's fine. We can merge those into one rule. Robert's rules, obviously, would control. Seating time, I'm not in favor of seating time. Rotation of voting order, not a big deal to me, whatever council would like to do. Camera use, I would like to see a split camera. I think the members of the public should be able to have their face shown as well as, I think the public needs to see how we're acting, whether we're, you know, being obnoxious or, or talking or whatever. I think that keeps us all on our best behavior. And I'm not sure I can raise that. Was I on the prevailing side?
You were not.
I was not. So I can't raise that.
You can't ask for it to be reconsidered.
I can't ask. Okay. So I think if, if one of my colleagues would raise it, that would be good. But that's where I'm at. So that's, that's where I'm at on all these. Who wants to go next? Mr. Brotman?
I will. Well, I'm not going to go through everything because we've had this discussion and we have the ordinance to be introduced. So I'll only touch on the slide that has the open issues. Is it Slide 7, if you could go to that?
Can you pop that back open then?
Yeah. And in the meantime, I do want to, I'll, I'll say a few other, a few other little things. One of them is on Mr. Durham's comment about having the agenda previews or have, have, yeah, the agenda preview online updated every week. Is that something we can do?
That's something we started and we just checked. Unfortunately, the last time it was posted was on April 29th. So Mr. Durham is correct, but the intent has been to have it updated in advance every week. So we'll make sure with the city clerk's office that it gets done.
Okay.
That was the plan.
That's, was my, you know, assumption in, in saying that we're going to no longer have the assistant city manager read the agenda preview, that it's available online. I agree with him, Mr. Durham, that we, we have to commit to doing that.
Yes.
Question on that. So you have the agenda, when you're posting the agenda for, say, on Tuesday, do they get the, the preview for the next meeting at the same time?
Well, the preview that the assistant city manager reads came, comes from the city clerk, so they have it.
Okay.
Before we post any future agendas, we send the future agendas to the city manager's office and we wait for his approval for us to post it. So if we don't get the approval, then we do not post it.
Oh, so now we found out what's going on.
I didn't want to open a can of worms.
Well, since that can of worms is open, that's an inaccurate statement because every time, as busy as I am, I make sure that it gets, I don't need to approve it because it's already printed, right? So I make sure it gets approved and I have proof that it's been approved. So there's something fails in the process that we'll have to fix.
Okay. Let's just.
You can work on that. I think you heard what council would like to have.
Yeah, we just have to.
That was the plan and we'll make sure that it happens.
Okay. As long as we commit to doing that. I was just going to make a comment to Mr. Dish's request or suggestion that we keep the five-minute oral communication. I was going to remind him, you've heard this before, the Gettysburg Address was two minutes. You can do it. Just be more efficient. And seating time, I, I am okay with, with the city attorney's suggestion. I think you said two, a maximum of two. The people have to be in the chamber. We can make it one, we can make it two. I'm open, but I think some slight accommodation for seating of time, I'm not opposed to. I'll just put that out there. Rotation of voting order, I think it's a little bit complicated when we're changing it for every agenda item. You know, I've, I've been number one, the first person to vote for a long time. Now I'm number two. I, you know, I wish we had a voting system where we could also all push a button at the same time. But until we have that, I'm okay keeping the order the way it is. That's just me. And I'll just comment on the wide, the reason I still think the way we're doing it is the right way to do it is because, you know, we're here to conduct the business of the city. The public comes to address the council. The public doesn't come to address the public. And I heard Ms. Iraghi say, the main reason here is that she wants to address the public. Well, this isn't the place to do that. This isn't the place to do that. This is the place to address the council. If you want a soapbox, you have to find another place for your soapbox. And the problem when we have the And the problem, when we have the, the camera on the person speaking, is that we get people that are using this platform as a way to communicate their messages, whether they're running for election, or they're trying to create social media content that they can then blast all over, and I just don't think that's appropriate. That's not what we're here for, and so, I'm very much in favor of keeping things the way they are right now. I'm not interested in reopening that question. And I think that's about it. I'll leave it there.
Okay. So we'll be discussing, as you mentioned, seating time seems to be something that we'll be getting into. Who would like to go ahead? Councilman Sotirian?
Sure, I'll go. All right, seating time, I'm okay with, probably not more than one, is what I'm looking at. Rotation of voting order, if there's an appetite, I, I just think that it complicates things. I think last time this was brought up, I said, you know, I don't count votes. Your, your vote is your vote, so I don't know why we're, we need to rotate. I'm not waiting to see how, one of my colleagues is going to vote, my position is my position on the issue, so, and I'm the first one, I've never had an issue doing that, so I don't know why you would be counting votes or why you would want a rotating system for voting. I think it just complicates things. I already made my comments about the camera usage, I would do want to keep it at a wide angle and how we have it now. I would say the, the one question I had was the community event announcement, and are we, are we not merging the community event announcement and the first public comment? I thought that's what we were going to do.
I think there was some direction, but when I went back and watched the tape, the discussion then shifted to, no, leave the community event announcement portion as a standalone item, and then have that first period of oral communications right after it. The thought process that was expressed at the time by the council is that, in reality, the folks that come to actually give a community announcement is relatively low, so you, you know, you're not exhausting a lot of time by allowing that, but then people who want to speak on non-agenda items, or non-agenda items, or non-agenda items, we're going to have that opportunity to do it right after that.
Okay. And then, Mayor, I think you were the one that I had raised the issue of removing the item or having the council, and I remember specifically, it was on an item, there was an error in the staff report, and staff wasn't ready to come. The agenda item was posted, and then the staff had requested for it to be removed. I think there are circumstances where it should be like the mayor's discretion, or, yeah, yeah, so I, I know that was recommended during my, my mayorship on an item, and I think there wasn't clarification made why that item was removed, and that's where it kind of came from, but there are, there are times that things happen, and then, you know, it should be under the mayor's discretion and the city manager to decide if they need to take something down. It's, I'm, I'm leaving that to you, I mean, I, you know, if we've selected a mayor, then that mayor should be the one deciding, so. And then, I think that was it. Okay, I think that's all I had.
Yes, I'm going to start with easy ones, in not particular order. The seating one, I'm okay with one member of the public to give up their time to others. Alphabetical order, once in a while, it's okay if we, if we switch it. I, I think it's, it's, it would make it a little interesting. But as far as everything else goes, we have to look at the background and why we're doing things that we're doing today. And we always had speakers that, that were a little more aggressive than, than the rest. We had Mr. Spiritu, God bless his soul, he, Dr. Spiritu, he passed away, he was a big advocate of, of handicap ramps on, on different, different areas of the city. Mr. Larry, Larry, Harry Zavos, who was a huge advocate of utility rates not being increased. Watch among the Sarian, Margaret Hammond, even Councilman Brockman was here advocating for, you know, against Grayson at that time. We always had, you know, members who were a little bit more aggressive than the others, but in last three, four years, we, we talk about, community members have to speak on issues that is related to the city, some issues that was not related to the city, it's not the purview of the council was brought to these chambers. That's why we had this, this big fight, this big division between members of the community, and it created some issues that we, the angle of the camera was changed. It's, let's, let's be honest, it's because of that, people come here and address me personally and speak against me, it's fine, it's their right. You can't say, you can't address one person, because sometimes they have an issue with me, for example, they come in and, or address you, or whoever, right? It's their right, you can't tell them who to address or not to address. They are here, they speak to the, to the community, and yes, they want the members of the community to hear them too, because this is what this, this forum is about, this is what this meeting is about, to inform the, the rest of the community, everything we do is for the community. We can't say, our comments are for the community, if someone comes here and speaks, they can't speak to the community. And the angle of the camera, I think it's, it's just, it's just silly, the way we're doing it. I think it has to be changed, split, split camera, split screens, one shows the members of the, the council, the other shows the, the speakers. And how many people use that for their social media or their, their campaigns? Other people use this forum, this, this podium for their campaigns. It doesn't have, the camera doesn't have to be on their face, it was done. Also, there are things in our report, like, they cannot have a sign more than eight and a half by eleven. I'm on, on page ninety-seven, Rules of the Coram, removal of the disruptive individuals. Who, who, who brings signs here? Sometimes unions are here, they have a little larger signs, what are we going to say? You can't bring that sign in. Or we had Glendale Environmental Coalition who came here, we had Armenian Society of Los Angeles at that point, that we were, you know, going back and forth on their location, they had signs up. I mean, these are too much, too many rules and regulations and trying to squeeze and control everything, we don't need to. We never had these issues in the past. Last twenty-five years that I've been involved in the city, and I've been going back and forth to the council, we never had this many rules, and we keep adding rules and keep adding rules. I'm, I'm okay, the way things are, the way it is. I mean, as far as the five minutes oral communication in the end, why make it three minutes? What does that two-minute do when, when you have three speakers? It's six minutes difference. Let people come and speak. The more we try to squeeze this thing and make it narrower, the more pushback we're going to get from the public. And I, I think we, the way it's being run, it's fine. Removing an item from the agenda, I think it has to be done by the vote of the council. I remember items were removed that didn't have anything to do with the report not being ready, but I spoke about seating, rotation, wide angle, I'm going backwards. Cut-off time, eleven PM, I understand, I don't mind if you have to sit here. When we had the, the Oakmont Two, was it Oakmont Two or Oakmont Three? They went until four o'clock in the morning. We had Grayson, we sat here until three in the morning. We had rent control, right-to-lease issue, we sat here until, we can't say, no, everybody go home, because it's eleven o'clock, I want to go home. It's part of our, our, our job, if you will. And many of our meetings, it hasn't gone beyond eleven, eleven-thirty. I'm okay with having a time, but if we have to go a little bit later, I'm fine with it. Yeah, non-agenda items must be within the council's jurisdiction. Where does it say what our jurisdiction is? That's a really wide, wide, broad, and somewhat, somewhat of a vague statement. And that's what I'm saying, some of the issues that was brought here to this dais had nothing to do with, with our job here, and that's what created a lot of issues. People got louder, and we called the police on them, and then we said, change the angle of the camera, and I think we need to just calm it down, let people speak, and go about their business, it will be okay. The three minutes in the beginning, I'm okay with it. At the end, as I said, five minutes is good, and I have a couple of other... Yeah, and reconsideration and reconsideration of an item or rescission of an item, you know, we have it here as well. It says, once a vote is taken, accept the decision and avoid returning to the same issue. I can count, maybe four or five of them, that came back with another way of, of, no, it's not that, it's this, but at the end, we discussed, like the drive-throughs, right? It was brought back for another issue, but all we talked about is conditional use permit and banning it, and we ended up doing conditional use, which was voted on in the past. I think we have to, you make a decision, we stick to it, and we don't have to bring everything back. I can count, maybe four or five items tonight that we voted on, but a month later, you know, people changed their mind and they brought it back. So, let me see what else I have. That's all I have, and I think one thing that we need to do is, I'm reminding myself most of the time that this position has always been a, a nonpartisan position, apolitical, but it, it has become very political in general, and I think that sometimes creates issues within the members of the communities from two different parties that come here and, and voice their opinion, the way they voice their opinion, because we, I include myself, I'm not saying just you, all of us here are guilty of making this body a very political council member, council, council position, which had nothing to do with, even if you go to PDI and you want to purchase your, your, during your election, when you want to purchase data from PDI, if your position is a, a political position, like Assembly or Senate, if you are a Republican, they won't sell it to you. You can't get any accounts from them. But if it is a council member, council position, yes, they, they give it to you, because this position in their book is a non-political position. So I think I'm okay the way that things are, let, let people come and speak, and angle of the camera, I think it has to be changed. I know I was in the minority, and that's nothing new, but it's, it's, I think it's just fair to people that spend time, take off, you know, away from their families and their jobs and come here and speak, and we don't want to show their face, just because few people, not too many people, use that in their social media. And they can come in here and ask the city attorney, they can come in here and have a, a camera with their selfie stick and record themselves and put it on the agenda, and they can see themselves and the audience too. So with that, I, that's where I am.
Mr. Garcia?
If I could just briefly address perhaps some of the concerns on the procedural slash decorum rules. Under state law, the, the council is authorized to remove individuals who are disruptive, and the, the state law under the Brown Act encourages local agencies to adopt formal rules as pertaining to in defining what are, what is disruptive conduct. So what we did in putting these rules together was, was research, and this was the discussion in January, what a lot of other jurisdictions similar to Glendale are doing in terms of best practices. And it's really to put, have objective criteria, so that then the city and the city council and whoever the presiding officers at the time cannot be accused of being, sort of making up the rules as, as we go along. They're very, they're very well-defined what constitutes disruptive conduct. As far as what, you know, speaking on topic, and true, I guess there's not, there's not a full definition to that, but again, that is what the Brown Act says, that we can regulate speakers based on whether they're speaking on the topic on the agenda, or they're speaking within the subject matter jurisdiction, and they're, maybe that's more of an art than a science, but certainly, you know, whoever the presiding officer is can make the determin- determination in conjunction with, with our office, what is germane to the city council's jurisdiction and what is not. And that's kind of what we do, and that's what's put into the rules. So really, it wasn't, the intent here was not to create a new set, a new set of rules, but codify our existing practices, as well as put some definition to certain things, so that later on, if there's a challenge, somebody cannot say, well, I was never advised that I couldn't do this. And like I said, it's things like the, the rule with the sign and the size of it, again, many other cities have a very similar rule, is to prevent a proliferation of signage that prevents other members of the public from being able to, to witness the proceedings, because the signs are so large. Again, I guess people can agree to disagree on that, but that's the intent of that.
I, I understand, it's part of the rule, part of the rule, but we, we never had that, we never had, like, when you go to a soccer game, and somebody's in front of you with a big flag, and you can't see the game, but it is what it is, and we never had that issue when people came up with large signs and interrupted others or disrupted meetings. But if, that's fine, I mean, it's in the rules, if they bring it, we'll decide if we want to remove those signs or not at that time. Am I correct? If, if that happens, let's say you have a meeting, it's a, an important item, and people show up with signs that are larger than eight and a half by eleven, at that time, the council or the mayor can say, look, I'll let it go, or no, we want to, we want, we want you guys to remove it. Is that the discretion of the, the mayor or the council at that?
Certainly, the presiding officer will have some juris, some, some discretion, as long as it's evenly applied and in a way that's fair, they're going to have some discretion.
Okay, let's move on and let someone else speak, Mr., Ms. Sotirian?
I was just going to say that, you know, that even in the last year, the things that you're seeing up on the walls and so forth were, are all rules that existed, right? So I didn't come up with them, if you go to our city attorney and say, you know, can someone speak on any topic, his answer is going to be, right now, before anything is passed, that it has to be under the city council's jurisdiction. So you're just putting it on paper in order for people to not have to constantly go, go to the city attorney and say, well, you know, can I do this, or can I not do that, without it being part of our own city documents? So, no, we're not adding a slew of new rules that have to do with, you know, how people behave, what the purpose, the purpose of, and the definition of the public oral communication is to communicate, and that came from the uprising in the nineteen fifty's and sixty's of the open meetings, while the practice was in place and started in the nineteenth century. It really took form in the nineteen fifty's and sixty's to allow the public to come speak to their leaders. So it, it was, it's not, it was never meant for it to be, for them to address the public, it was for their, for their elected members, so...
Anyway, that's a dead issue. The two of us in the, in the minority can't, can't bring that forward, so let's... Mr. Garcia, so do you have the direction you need for the resolution, or?
I do, I believe I do, Mr. Mayor. There seemed to be consensus on the seating time to allow one speaker to cede his or her time to another, both have to be in chambers. No change to the voting order. I know we continue to look at whether there can be an electronic voting system, but that's, that's not, that's for later discussion, and no change on angle, can, angle of the, of the camera. And then everything else has, has provided to you in, in the resolution, so if...
So what's left for discussion?
So at this point, I think if council would just introduce the ordinance, and then direct, direct us to, if you want to make a motion to direct us to bring back the resolution with the changes that you, you just directed on seating time and voting order, and we will, we will do that.
Okay, well, may I introduce the ordinance?
Okay, well, may I introduce the ordinance? I will introduce the ordinance with those two suggestions for.
They're not in the ordinance, you can just introduce the ordinance, they're in the resolution, so the second amendment motion directing us to bring back the resolution with the two changes on seating time and no change on voting order.
Okay, so I introduce the ordinance and I will move that we bring back the resolution with those two changes.
Yes. Does the ordinance indicate that the last oral communication is three minutes or five minutes?
Currently, the municipal code requires it to be five minutes. If the ordinance is adopted and the resolution is adopted, then once it's effective on June 19th, then that second period of communications will be three minutes.
But did we agree on that? I think we.
I'm in favor of a five-minute for the second.
Me too.
We voted to agree on three minutes.
Oh, well, the direction that was given at the previous was to bring it back to three minutes, so certainly, here's what I was.
We'll vote on it.
We'll have a final vote on it next week, so then the council can have a discussion whether to leave it at five minutes or put it to three.
All right, that'll be a vote. Okay, so do we need to vote on the direction on the resolution then?
If you could, yeah.
Okay, so Mr. Bratman made the motion to incorporate these proposed changes in the resolution. Is there a second?
A second.
Roll call.
Council members, that's Adurian.
Yes.
Bratman.
Yes.
Carpetian.
Yes.
Kasakian. Mayor Najarian.
Yes.
Okay, what's next?
I believe it's future, Discussion of Councilmember Future Agenda Request B.
Of B.
Yes. Councilmember Asatrian's request to agendize a report regarding contracting directly with communications and outreach consultants for city projects in lieu of subcontract arrangements with project contractors and consultants.
We can hold it all.
Okay, upon discretion of Councilmember Asatrian, she'd like to hold off on that, seeing no objection, we will hold off until she requests it to be replaced. Next item.
Our oral communications discussion is limited to items not a part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report. We have three speaker cards on this item.
Okay, let's call them up.
The first speaker is Beth Brooks, following Beth Brooks is Alex Belekian and Shelton.
Okay, Beth Brooks, you're up.
No, just some clarification, although I know you can't talk to me, basically, but if it turns out that some department, you didn't start the thing. Some department, I think it's five minutes, it's all right, that some department commission or something can be a fiscal sponsor for an organization that's not a 501(c)(3), so if I start an organization to educate renters, does that mean now that I can get money from the city, that a department or something will be a fiscal sponsor then for my organization? Because if this is how it's gonna work now, that instead of getting money directly, we're gonna go to a fiscal sponsor, I would love to know how I can have a fiscal sponsor to give money to renters or to educate renters. I would love to, you know, that's what I would like to have. If you're gonna do this, that's what I want. So, you know, that's, you know, that's really, that's about all I have to say right now. And also, that I would like to put in, when you discuss the ordinance again, that you discuss first and then public comments come at the end, because, you know, there's always something you say that will spark some, something in my head, anyway. Okay, that's it. I appreciate your time, thank you.
Have you considered that we wanna hear from you to spark something in our brain?
No, I don't think so, no, no. I'm gonna think about that.
Next speaker, please.
Next is Alex Belekian.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I am Alex Belekian, and I came up here to speak. We have spent a lot of time this evening on a lot of subjects that aren't terribly consequential to the average person. So, I know you, the two of you said that you're not speaking to the public. I am speaking to the public. In seven weeks, our electricity rates are gonna go up by 11 and a half percent, which brings the total to 42% since the rates went up December 1st, 2023. There are four people on this dais who were presiding that day when the vote came up. There were no votes cast against the electric rate hike, and I just want to remind people. So, Dan, you said, and Ellen, you said, people aren't here to talk to the public, they're here to talk to their elected leaders. Those are not your seats, those are our seats. The people put you in those seats, and the people can take you out of those seats if they so choose. I think you saw this week, the Mid-Wilshire City Council, Neighborhood Council from LA City, all of the incumbents were voted out because people no longer felt that their elected officials represented their best interests. And with statements like that, where you say you are not here to speak to the public, you are supposed to be the public, you are supposed to be a reflection of the public. And if you say, Ellen, they are talking to their leaders, a leader would spend time on things that matter most to people, and that would be the electricity rates coming up. I just had my $850 electricity bill because it was hot and I had to operate my AC. The summer of discontent is coming. And I just want to remind people, and Dan, when you say that you don't want people to create social media content, you will be running for reelection, Ellen will be running for reelection. If Patrick Murphy and Ellen Durham decide that they want to run and unseat you, how unfair it would be for you to show your face for hours every Tuesday, but them not be able to show their face, so that people who think that this person speaks for me, they couldn't even recognize them out on the street. How unfair would that be? You all are deciding on a mayoral selection process that prevents somebody from being mayor in their last year because it's unfair. How unfair is it there, Dan, that somebody who would oppose you like Patrick Murphy, like Ellen Durham, wouldn't be able to show their face to their constituents? So, I would like to remind you all that there is a global discontent of people feeling left out, that government no longer represents their best interests, that government no longer represents them. And I remind you to keep that at the forefront of your thoughts, otherwise, just like the Mid-Wilshire City Council, you might be in for rude awakening. Thank you.
Next is Shelton.
So, we find ourselves here again. I tried to warn Glendale Unified School District against the threat of predators, and I tried to warn this council against the threat of sexual predators, but our fake mayor, Ellen and Dan, continue to support predators. I wanted to bring to the attention of the people sitting up there, as well as the police officer sitting over there, that a man named Jay Graham, Jay, excuse me, Gray James, who goes by the name Jennifer Heaslip, recently posted on Instagram under the hashtag Queer Havoc, he filmed himself going into a bathroom, a women's bathroom at a local mall, and he filmed young children, five, six, seven-year-olds. I expect you to Google it right now. Now, in California, in a public space, you're allowed to film because there is no expectation of privacy. There is the expectation of privacy in a bathroom, which your lawyer over there knows well, and old Jay Graham's has been in this room many times. I don't know why he hasn't been arrested yet, especially when you see the look of the young girls, our five- and six-year-old girls. Now, he does blank out the faces of the girls, but he is filming in a toilet. This is the man you wanna give money to with Glendale Out pride. These are perverts. When women take male hormones on top of a mental illness, and a mental illness is not a personal identity, we've already had several young women who call themselves transgender, but of course, you can't change your gender, go on serial murder sprees this last year, particularly in a Christian school. So, Ellen, particularly you, since you love to defend women, what are you gonna say to all the mothers of the girls of that film? And are you gonna ask the police officers to look into the film, which is posted? Again, it's on Instagram, you can check it out right now, filming in a public toilet, young children. Every week, several of my friends, we get together, we watch Predators getting picked up at the Glendale Galleria. You ever watched those, Ellen? Those men go to meet those 14-year-old boys, those 12-year-old boys? You know they're members of Out, Glendale Out? You ever been the victim of a rape, sexual assault? That's what you're supporting. You're not supporting gay people. And of course, Bratton over there, he knows all about this because there are several mentally ill people in his family who think they can change their gender. Cross-gender hormones destroy you, they destroy your bones, they destroy your emotions. So, now, Jennifer, with her beard, I'd like to hear what you have to say about watching the film, watching these five- and six-year-old girls being filmed in the bathroom. I don't know if you have kids. I have nieces, I have nephews, I have grandnieces, I have grandnephews. I've been defending gay men against predators, straight, and people like Jennifer, my whole life. Believe me, I know how they operate. I've tried to warn you with their books. Ari even spoke about it, and yet here you sit. You know, his hashtag name is Jerk Pink Jerk Off Boy? I think that's what he calls himself. Did you hear that, what he calls himself? Or herself, I should say. It's only gonna get worse the more you encourage it, and thank you, you're the mayor, Vartan, thank you for standing up, for being a real man. I'm waiting for the rest of the council and their lawyers. It's not funny. I know most of you are straight men, most of you called me a fag when you were younger. Now, look, here I am. Check out his Instagram.
Thank you. Any other?
We have one caller, Randy Stevenson. Randy, you're on air, you have three, I mean, five minutes. Randy Stevenson, you're on air.
Hi, Mayor Najarian, council members and staff. My name is Randy Stevenson, I'm the president of the Greater Downtown Glendale Association. I wanna first thank council and staff for its work last December on the much-needed updating of the city ordinances related to sidewalk vending and camping. There is, of course, an amplified sound ordinance on file as well. As budget season is upon us, I ask that you consider providing the director of community development, Mr. Calvert, with the necessary resources to address the now ubiquitous problem that is street vending and amplified sound in the greater downtown area. I ask that the financial support devoted to enforcement take the form of additional personnel and/or overtime such that violators of the ordinances will understand and comply with the requirements as outlined in said ordinances. Allow me to identify some of the issues surrounding illegal street vending and production of amplified sound so that you understand the gravity of the issue. Street vendors and performers, one, impede pedestrian mobility. Two, leave a mess on the sidewalk that not only requires additional cost to clean up, but tarnishes the experience for residents and visitors and detracts from the overall image of the city. Three, a significant number of vendors or performers operate without permit, depriving the city of required fees. Four, street vendors in particular bring numerous health department issues into play. Illegal vendors are not regulated, and compliance with health department food safety requirements is not controlled. The result is that the likelihood of sickness from ingesting food product significantly increases. Five, street vendors detract and distract potential customers from businesses that legally operate brick and mortar stores that sell similar products. The city derives sales tax from its brick and mortar stores, and the street vendors essentially rob the city and the business of revenue. Illegal street vending and production of amplified sound, be it without permit or in violation of the conditions stipulated in the respective ordinances, is a significant problem for which resources should be allocated. As you know from my past communications, I'm happy to provide you with countless examples of the detrimental effects of these bad actors. I trust this issue will be addressed, and through the budgeting process, Mr. Calvert will be given the necessary resources. Thank you so very much for your time, I look forward to your partnership in solving this problem. Take care.
Thank you. That is all.
That concludes oral communications, we have no new business. That concludes our agenda items. Is there a motion to adjourn? We are adjourned.